I know we're all thinking about that now with the Olympics.
When putting the lease?
There has not been as many people here since fall.
Since fall, I don't know anybody.
Yeah, I know, it should've been Jason, right?
You know, it's a nice, nice work though. Nice work.
Okay, he's ready. A whole new world. I would like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, August 16th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by our city attorney.
Hand over heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
Thank you, we see it. A rule call?
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Protam Olson?
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Marshall is absent this evening.
Thank you. Any announcements?
Are we opening the city council?
No.
David, do you have any announcements?
No. David? Okay. Any written communication?
Yes, I've received three letters of a written communication on item number eight this evening, which is the Cabrillo Mall Recreation Revitalization Project, and one letter I would like Audra to come up and read it.
Good evening, Council. The mayor asked if this letter that the city council received, be read into the record. Dear officials of the city of Avalon, I am so impressed with your latest accomplishment, the Avalon Transit buses. I really think it's a great thing to have our own bus system. It's one of the best ideas our town has had in a long time. The buses are small, quiet, and very comfortable. I recently took my children from Little Angels Day Care on the bus for a field trip and they just loved it. Wanted to say, they want to go again, just wanted to say thank you and kudos. Sincerely, Annie Salamonovich. And just to stay on that topic real quick, I'd like to introduce George and Brett. George will be the new face here at Avalon Transit, so if you see him, stop by and say hi. And this Thursday will be our second ride free day, and we're also extending it to Dial-A-Ride riders, so if there's any Dial-A-Ride riders that haven't tried the new Dial-A-Ride yet, go ahead and take advantage of it. Thank you very much.
All day Thursday?
All day Thursday, buses and Dial-A-Ride.
Thank you and welcome. City manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just mention a couple things, well, it's actually, there are seven things, but I'll do this quickly. I did receive this week a telephone call from the chair of the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board, Irma Munoz, and Ms. Munoz was delighted to hear from us in the city. She said she'd like to meet and talk about ways in which they can continue to support us, and so that meeting will be scheduled shortly. I did also receive a voice message that a letter is coming from the Federal Aviation Administration in response to your concerns that were expressed regarding regulation of drones. So I'm told that letter is in the mail. I also sent two letters to the CEO of the Southern California Edison. I'm just asking for, more introductory, but asking for some assistance to the city attorney in arranging some meetings. I met with the chamber CEO to discuss activities of the chamber and directions that it will be taking in the future. We discussed ways in which we can align ourselves to make sure we're getting the maximum benefit. Their business survey will be coming out shortly that you know about. We're also bringing forward to you at the next meeting, or in September, we'll be bringing forward to you changes in the purchasing ordinance to modernize it, and also to, A, provide a provision that provides preference to locals for local purchases, and B, that provides, given all equals, purchase of products made in the United States. So with that, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Campbell?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Amazing. Council?
Can I start?
You can start.
No?
Um, okay, so on the first Wednesday of the month, I attended the Gateway Cities Council of Government meeting. There was no Transportation Committee meeting, and the largest piece of discussion is an item on our agenda tonight, so I'll save comments for that time. Hoping that we can get an update, at least to the city council members, if we could please get an update from city staff on the progress of the fuel dock, and specifically where we're at, if progress is happening, if so, what that progress is, what our intended completion time would be, and any other data, and then also if we could receive regular updates. Probably the easiest thing to do is just email regular updates to us.
On the fuel dock, ma'am?
On the fuel dock.
Thank you.
Yeah, please. It's really difficult when members of the community have more information than council, so oftentimes when we're asked questions, it would be helpful to have answers rather than not know. And then, we, the last two meetings, I've brought up a brief discussion about raking and cleaning the beaches, and the last meeting, I may have misheard, but I believe that I was told that the beaches are being cleaned and raked. And I did have a couple members of the community visit today with the idea that that actually wasn't happening, and so I'd like to get an understanding of if we are cleaning the beaches, raking them, and how often, how that's, who's doing it, or how often we're cleaning, would be great.
Do you want that now?
If you've got one now, I'll take it.
I was under the same, I made the same conclusion that you did. I will check, though, with that, and so that we have an understanding that is, one that is reliable, and I'll let all of you know with that, and I thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Sure. And that's actually it. Well, that's it for me.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Sampson?
Oh, let's see, I want to ask just the general public, traffic is like, kind of crazy in the town right now, this time of the year, so just try to slow down. I know you can only go so fast in this town. Don't be in a hurry, kids are running everywhere. Some people are in a hurry when they come out of stores, and next thing you know, they're in the middle of the street. So if everybody just slows down and is extra cautious, we can get through this summer without anybody, or any accidents or anything like that. I want to thank everybody for doing that, too, because it's really important. I know there's a lot of vehicles in this community, and we're going to deal with that in the future. I don't know how yet, we're going to bring it to the council's attention, and we're going to get community input for that. In the meantime, we've just got to be careful out there and be considerate of the other human beings that are around us. I also want to thank everybody for their diligence in their waters, in saving their water, and then just make sure you pass the word to everybody that it's really important what we do when we conserve water, even if it's just turning off, you know, the shower while you lather up, or turning it off while you brush your teeth, or while you're shaving. Those things are really important. It's a very contentious thing right now that we're dealing with. Edison is working really hard at it, the best they can. We're pushing them and scrutinizing them to the highest level that we possibly can. So it's, just things can't go any, they can't get along any faster or better than the way we're trying to do it right now. We're in the situation that we're in, and if we all work together, I know we can conserve water and we can get through this. We're going to get through it, but it's just going to take everybody's patience and working together and actually conserving the best you can, because it's getting, it's getting to where we, we're going to go into stage three. It's 50% rationing. If you need an allocation extension like that, you call up, I believe it's Mary Schickling, or there's some numbers you can call with Edison. If you need them, you can come into the city and you can ask our city manager, David Jenkins, for those, for that information, for your water allocation extension. But just make sure you tell everybody in your household, if you have a hotel out there or you're a visitor here, it really helps out, and it's bringing us all together, actually. It's a drag that it's got to be this way, but that's the way it is, and that's all for me.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson.
Thank you.
Richard?
Yeah, I just have a question. It might be for Dennis. I know we had a saltwater leak recently, and I was just wondering where we stand on our replacement valves to help isolate the situation when we have it, instead of shutting down half the town to get to the problem.
Yes, sir. It's scheduled for this autumn, hopefully, well, probably November.
Okay.
It's a public bid coming out that you all approved, the Global CIP project, that includes saltwater valve replacements, additions, and includes some sewer work, streets and roadways, electrical upgrades for the treatment plant. It's a global CIP project.
Yeah.
And it's going to be in 2016.
Okay. Do we remember how many valves that we are going to replace this year?
Right now, it looks like 15.
15, okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, Mr. Hernandez?
That's it for me.
Okay. I have just one thing. In the Friday update, could we also update the progress on Joe Machado? Joe Machado fielded the turfing of it in the Friday update, so we can know where that is, that we'll be aware of what's happening out there?
Yes, sir, thank you.
We have some presentation now. We have one presentation, there's going to be a proclamation for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Mr. Sampson?
Yes. Whereas, the American Cancer Fund for Children's and Kids' Cancer Connection report, cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age 15. This tragic disease is detected in nearly 15,000 of our country's young people each and every year, and whereas, one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer. Many infants, children, and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers, and whereas, founded over 20 years ago by Steven Feierstein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor Cosmetic Family, the American Cancer Fund for Children Incorporated and Kids' Cancer Connection Incorporated are dedicated to helping these children and their families, and whereas, the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids' Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient physio-social services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Children's Hospital Los Angeles. The City of Hope Mattel's Children Hospital at Ronald Reagan USC, UCLA Medical Center, LA County USC Medical Center, Kaiser Permanente Medical Center, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas, the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids' Cancer Connection also sponsor courageous kids' recognition award ceremonies, community get well cards, and hospital celebrations in honor of child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now, therefore, we, the Avalon City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2016 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and would like to thank Kids' Cancer Connection for all their support in honoring and encouraging those living with cancer, and encouraging our citizens to raise awareness about the prevention and control of cancer, dated this day, the 16th day of August 2016.
Thank you, sir. Presentations. Mr. Lawrence, and for those of you in the audience from the hospital, after we get done with Mr. Lawrence, we're going to move to the hospital agenda, so we can cut it short.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Lawrence, Senior Project Manager with Southern California Edison, and I'm here to give you an update on our Stage Two water rationing plan, as well as an update on our Stage Three activation. Currently, our Middle Ranch reservoir is at a water level of 147 acre feet. That is roughly 14% of its capacity. The trigger, the traditional trigger for Stage Three water rationing is 200 acre feet, but we have gone below that amount based on our filing last fall with the California Public Utilities Commission, letting them know we were going to get through the winter season and then reassess, and we have now determined that it is no longer prudent to remain at Stage Two rationing levels, and we'll be activating Stage Three to preserve our groundwater resources at this time. So some Stage Two statistics for you. For the month of July, we were able to reduce our water use over our baseline period by almost 29%, and this is compared to our baseline period, which is June 2012 through May 2013. So slightly above the 25% mandate, but dropping below the 40% reduction in water use that we've seen trending over the last couple of years. This was achieved while visitor counts did go up by over 61%, so it was a pretty big spike in visitor counts for the month of July compared to that same baseline period. We have now reached the two-year mark since we activated Stage Two water rationing in August of 2014. So we wanted to show you how we compare against the baseline period in our first year of rationing and now our second year of rationing. During our baseline period, our water sales were at 382 acre feet, while visitor counts were at roughly 755,000. In the first year of Stage Two, we reduced our water use by 144 acre feet, down to 237 acre feet. That while visitor counts went up to 921,000 for the year, for that 12-month period. And in the second year of rationing, slight improvements to our water use while visitor counts did increase up to 971,000. In the last 12 months, we've been able to reduce our water use over the baseline period by 159 acre feet. So Stage Two has been very successful in preserving our groundwater resources and delaying the activation of Stage Three to this point. We likely would have been in Stage Three a year ago, had we not been, the community not responded as favorably as they have to Stage Two. This chart here is, shows you the number of flow restrictors that have been installed during the course of the last 12 months, and that line is the blue line. The amount of flow restrictors that have been issued during the month of July was about just under 5% of the billing periods that closed for that month. The red line represents the number of multi offenders, so the flow restrictor had already been issued, and the red line is those repeat offenders with two or more violations. Back in April 2016, we had reset the clock on the violations, and so that's why you're seeing a flat red line through July so far. Come in, sometime in August, we'll start to see customers that have had a flow restrictor issued now start to receive a multiple violation. Right now, our compliance to Stage Two overall has been right around 92%, and that's been fairly consistent. So again, we'd like to thank the community for their conservation efforts during this historic drought. So with that, that brings us to our Stage Three update, as we announced at the city council meeting, the second meeting during the month of June. As your water purveyor, it is no longer prudent to remain at 25% rationing levels, so we are activating Stage Three. The map that you're looking at here on this slide is the U.S. Drought Monitor map of California, showing broad-scale drought conditions. And if you looked at this map a year ago, there'd be a lot more red on this map. Even though the La Niña did not benefit us, the high-pressure system kept it north of us, and so our neighbors in Northern California have seen a bit of drought relief, but one more drought-stricken year and Northern California will be back into exceptional or extreme drought conditions. Unfortunately, as I said, the high-pressure system kept the rainfall totals low for this past year, and we have not seen any drought relief, and we're now facing a six-year drought, which is approaching Catalina's worst drought historically, which occurred in the 1940s. So we are quickly approaching that drought. Due to the fact that as well, that meteorologists are expecting a La Niña climate condition this winter, La Niñas are historically below average rainfall years, and so we want to be prepared for that to hopefully defer and avoid Stage Four at all costs. Our rationing plan for Stage Three is different than Stage Two, and in developing our rationing plan, we were able to consider factors such as the water system, customers volumetric use, volumetric use, and then also the customer type. So as opposed to just simply coming across with a 50% rationing island-wide, we can now consider those variables in our rationing plan. So we had some of these details fleshed out in the last city council meeting I was presenting, and now we have the remaining details to share with you in the community. The Avalon customers, with the exception of Hamilton Cove, are going to be set at a 40% reduction from baseline water use, and that is a rationing level consistent with the results that we have seen in Stage Two. So we know some customers, from time to time, are not realizing that 40%, but in aggregate, Avalon and the Island community is at that 40% level. And that was based on a study of the water system and supplemental water source that we have with the desalination plan. So for example, customers' water use in September of 2012 is their baseline use. For Stage Three, we'll reduce that by 40%, and that'll be their Stage Three water allotment. And that water allotment is established on a month-to-month basis. So it does fluctuate from month to month based on your baseline usage. For our customers in Hamilton Cove and in the unincorporated Catalina or the interior, water rationing levels will be at 50% of baseline use. We had a large number of customers during Stage Two submit variance requests for their water allotments, and there was a number of reasons for that. By and large, a lot of customers had their circumstances change from the baseline period. They might have moved to a different residence, and the occupant prior to them had water use significantly below the number of occupants they have. So in that case, if the justification warranted an increase in the Stage Two water allotment, we did approve that increase. And so for those customers that do have an increased water allotment from their baseline, that's the basis for their Stage Three water allotment calculation. So we're not reverting back to the baseline amount for those customers. We'll simply add a, multiply a factor equivalent to 40 or 50% rationing of the baseline. There's another slight difference with our Stage Three rationing plan, and that's, for a lot of customers, their accounts had zero usage during our baseline period. And so the best information that we had at the time was looking at a similar classification of customers and establishing an average based on similar customer types. Where those accounts now are showing water usage, as opposed to using that average, we're using water usage from the last 12 months, and multiplying a factor to that water use to establish their Stage Three water allotment. And for customers that have not had any recent usage or any usage during that baseline period, we'll go ahead and continue to use an average for customers of a similar classification.
Before you move on, can I just help me understand, on approved Stage Two variances, customers with an approved Stage Two water allotment variance will receive an adjusted allotment equivalent to a 40% or 50% reduction?
Mm-hmm.
But, so I guess I don't understand 40 or 50%. If the city of Avalon is going into a 40%, where, what does this 50% mean?
The 50% is just referring to the second bullet point for Hamilton Cove in the interior.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. One new change in our Stage Three rationing plan as well is the establishment of a ceiling and a floor amount. And this was based largely due to feedback that we received when we activated Stage Two in 2014, and that was from our community outreach and hearing back from our customers during those meetings. And that was, I'm a longtime resident in Catalina, I understand the challenges with water. It's a desert island, we've been conserving water for a long period of time, long before the baseline period was established. So now, to mitigate that to the extent possible, we're going to have a floor amount established. And for our single-family residential customers, our multifamily residential customers, and then also our commercial and industrial customers, that floor has been established at 1,000 gallons per month, which comes out to 33 gallons per day. And so it won't mitigate every customer situation, but it should minimize the impact to those really low water users and prevent their water allotments that are already at a low amount for Stage Two from going any lower. For customers that do not have that floor in effect, because maybe they have a larger-sized family, the variance request process is still there, and if they provide justification, we'll consider their request. For our customers, we also have a ceiling now, and that was also based on that, those same meetings that we had activating Stage Two, that we want an equitable rationing plan, and that we have some customers that have not been conserving water for a long period of time. Can we look at adjusting their level of rationing, perhaps in excess of the mandate? And so we have established a ceiling amount as well for our single-family residential customers at 6,000 gallons per month, which comes out to 200 gallons per day. For our multifamily residential customers, the monthly ceiling is 65,000 gallons, and that daily amount comes out to 2,166 gallons. And then for our commercial and industrial customers, the monthly ceiling is 75,000 gallons per month, or 2,500 gallons per day. The one customer rate that I haven't spoken about is our irrigation rate. We did not establish a floor for irrigation rates, that's a discretionary or nonessential use of water at this time, of drinking water. So there is no minimum amount there for irrigation rates. And then the ceiling has been established at 5,000 gallons per month, or 166 gallons per day. And as there, I do have a slide here that a further restriction on our water use restrictions is around irrigation. In Stage Two, you're allowed to water one hour twice per week, and that is now down to one hour once per week. So the reductions in the ceiling and the water use there are consistent with the reduction in 50% of the allowed watering time.
Jeff, can you tell me, can you give me an example of what kind of businesses would use 75,000 gallons of water a month? Just off the top of your head, would you know any?
There was, there was a range. There are some campgrounds in the interior, there are some hotels. What I can tell you is that of the commercial accounts, commercial and industrial accounts, of all the billing periods that closed in 2015, 3% of them would be affected by the ceiling. So we really are talking about the high-end users here. 97% of our commercial and industrial customers' bills would not be impacted by this ceiling. On the single-family residential rate, the ceiling would affect just about 1.4% of the monthly bills that closed in 2015. And then of the multifamily residential customers, under 1% of those customers' bills would be affected by the ceiling. So the list of customers that fall into those percentages, it did vary from top to bottom.
Okay, thank you.
So for customers that do exceed their monthly water allotment, the first offense will result in a warning letter. We did reset the clock in April, and those, the number of violations that occurred since April will continue. And then... And then those will be measured on a rolling 12-month basis. So if we do end up in stage-three rationing for more than a year, every new month that closes, 13 months ago, will drop off. So it's just a rolling 12 months that will count the total violations that have occurred. So you won't be looking at three or four years of violations when we're assessing fines and flow restrictors and that type of thing. On the second violation, a customer will be subject to a flow-restricting device, and after a minimum of three-day period, they can have that device removed if they elect to do so for a $200 removal fee. For many of our customers, either due to the size of their water meter or because of public safety, we will not install a flow-restricting device. So the monetary fine is taking effect for those customers, and that would be a $250 fine. On the third offense, for that first group of customers that had a flow-restrictor installed, if they elected to have it removed, the flow-restrictor will be reinstalled and then left on indefinitely, and then there would be a $50 fine. For our customers that are not subject to a flow-restrictor, the fine amount goes down to $100, from $250 for the first one to $100 on the second one. And then for each additional offense, for customers that have a flow-restricting device installed, the fines go up in increments of $50, not to exceed $500. And then for customers that are not subject to a flow-restricting device, the fines go up in increments of $100, not to exceed the $500 cap. And this is more in alignment with Governor Jerry Brown's drought order that was put in place for the entire state of California. Our fines are actually below what's in Governor Brown's drought order.
Where does the fine money go to?
The fines are held in a memorandum account.
Uh-huh.
And then eventually, we'll have to file with the Public Utilities Commission on direction how to apply those funds. But they're not income or anything like that. They're subject to the commission approval.
So could, I mean, could the city participate on some level to say, "We want all monies received for fines to go towards paying for the second D cell unit"? I mean, do we have any help in controlling where the fine money goes to?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question. I'd have to check with my regulatory official.
Okay.
And we will have someone from our regulatory office available at the public meeting next week.
I mean, I know that we were being assessed fines for those, you know, at moments that they go over, and so it kind of only seems fair that Edison put that back towards trying to remedy the situation of water. So it would be helpful if we could participate, and if you could find out if we could participate and at what level.
Absolutely.
And/or if you already have a plan. If you already have a plan, maybe we could just be, if it could be shared with us, that would be great.
Yeah, I'll be happy to look into that for you. So in addition to our water allotments for stage three, we also have prohibitions and restrictions on water use. So this would apply to using potable, drinkable water for filling your swimming pool, for using water for hosing down your sidewalk, that type of thing. All of the stage-two restrictions and prohibitions are still in effect. And then with stage three, there's the change that I mentioned before, and that's watering is now down from Tuesdays and Fridays to just on Tuesdays for one hour per day. The other thing I want to point out is that we have new collateral material for our stage-three rationing plan. I think everyone's familiar with the blue banner that's on the dais. We have a lot of table tents and placards out in the community, and before stage three is activated on September 6th, we'll be distributing the new artwork and materials for all the local businesses to replace the blue artwork with this new yellow artwork. As far as our implementation timeline, on July 19th was when we announced at the city council meeting that we're activating stage three. On August 4th, we filed our Tier Two advice letter with the California Public Utility Commission. And on August 10th, we mailed out all of our customers' stage-three allotment letters. So hopefully, everyone is in receipt of those letters by now. If you have not received a letter, please contact our customer service or our Pebly Beach office, and we'll make sure we'll get a letter out to you. Last Thursday and Friday, ads ran for the public meeting that is scheduled to occur on August 24th, and those ads will run this Thursday and Friday as well in the local newspapers. And then on August 17th, we'll be holding a meeting out on the west end of the island to meet with the camp directors and inform them of stage three and a lot of the details that I'm sharing with you now.
Are these meetings open to the public?
Yes.
Okay, can you tell us where they're going to be and what time they're going to be?
The west end meeting, I want to say, is being held at 1:00 tomorrow, and we've already sent out communications to all the camp directors and customers out on the west end.
Okay, where at, in the west end?
Yeah.
Where at, on the west end? The west end's a big place.
It's at the Ismus.
At the Ismus, okay. Like where at in the...
At Two Harbors.
Yeah, but what's the facility?
I believe it's at the restaurant there.
At the restaurant?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. What about the meeting on the 24th? Where's that going to be and what time?
I'll get to that in just one second. I've got a slide for that. And then our activation date is on September 6th, and that was the Tuesday after the three-day weekend, which is Labor Day holiday. So in response to your question, Councilman Sampson, the meeting will be held at the Avalon School Auditorium, and we're going to have two sessions available for the public from 10:00 a.m. to noon, and then from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And for the first 30 minutes, we're going to have a lot of subject matter experts there on water operations, on our stage-three rationing plan, as well as rebate and other customer programs. So for 30 minutes, we'll have representatives outside of the auditorium answering questions, and then after about 30 minutes of that, we'll go into the auditorium, we'll provide a presentation to all the attendees, and then we'll take questions from the public as well.
Very good.
Is there going to be a translator?
Yes, there will be.
Will it be recorded?
That was in the works, I believe we will be. I'll confirm that tomorrow.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
And also, Jeff, are we able to get this on the city website also, some of this information?
Yes, absolutely. These are posted monthly, and Jordan has a copy of it.
Okay.
And if you do have any additional questions on our stage-three rationing plan, you can call the 800 number there, 367-8851. And if you call from Monday through Friday between 8:00 and 5:00, you'll have representatives that are trained specifically to handle Catalina questions and are well-informed on our stage-three rationing plan. In addition to that, some information's been posted on our website, sce.com/catalina, and we're in the process of updating all of our final documents in the next week or so, but they'll all be up there before the September 6 activation date. And then we also provide, there are water conservation tips at www/saveourwater.com. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions from the council?
I have a couple for you. Do you still have a water educator? I forget what the official term of the position was, somebody that was going around.
An inspector?
Inspector.
Yes. So we actually, someone new just started yesterday.
Okay.
And so we're in the process of training Cindy Mahan as our stage-three code enforcement inspector.
Okay.
And then also, Mary Schickling is no longer handling our stage-two, stage-three variance requests, and Selena Garcia is now in that position.
A difficult question, I know, and if you're unable to answer it, I certainly understand that, but how many flow restrictors are you guys behind? Are all flow restrictors that should be installed, installed?
No, there is a bit of a backlog.
Okay.
The latest number, I'd have to get back to you on that. There are some customers that, due to the size of the flow restrictor, we are trying to work on getting that size of a flow restrictor, and we're working with a number of vendors to do that. And just recently, we've determined that we won't be able to fabricate a flow restrictor that'll work. So we are now in the process of reducing that backlog, and then I should have a final number on that next week or two.
Okay. And then last update, on the 19th of July, one of the questions that I had asked was, could you present the information which shows where the draw on the reservoir versus the rest of the island is? How much the city draws versus the rest of the island? Were you able to...
We weren't in time for this meeting.
Okay.
We'll work on it for the next council meeting.
Okay.
I didn't want this presentation to go too lengthy, and I wanted to focus on the stage-three information, but we'll have that for you next month.
So secondarily to that, and then I'll really get to my point. Back in, on May 20th of 2014, I met with Edison and took some pretty significant notes, and included in those notes are how much water we draw, the city draws, on certain times of the year, and what at the time, you know, what the desalinization unit was able to produce. And then, of course, we've added the second D cell unit, which I understand is permitted, is operating in its intentional use, which is in brine mode. If, with the two D cell units, if we are able to produce 100% of the draw of the water in the City of Avalon, then why is the actual City of Avalon going into phase three during the times where we can produce enough water?
So there's a few reasons for that. Number one is the desalination plant is still a new plant, and it's a very complex plant. The brine-mode operation is now in service, but it is still a new technology. As with any new plant, our confidence in the system will increase over time. So when we're assessing the need to go into stage three and what percentage of rationing that should be for the customers in the system, the distribution system of our D cell plant, we can't assume a rate of 100% production from that plant. So that's why we came in less than 50%, because we do have the desalination plant there, and we do intend to reassess on a month-to-month basis. And there is an opportunity, at some point in time, when we have amount of data and can adjust our production forecast, to where we could potentially lower the percentage of rationing for customers in that Avalon system.
So I guess what's difficult for me to explain when I'm asked the question publicly is if in January, we only need 125,000 gallons of water to handle the draw, and we're able to produce 300,000 gallons, then, you know, we're... I'm trying to rationalize for the City of Avalon, we are being, yes, we are a large user of water, but we're paying for that water. We're making a majority of that water, and we're paying for it. And we're also, taxpayers are paying for the second D cell unit. We've gotten funding from the county to help assist in that as well. But if the city's paying top dollar for its water because it costs more money for us to pay for D cell water versus drawing directly from the reservoir, I'm having a hard time justifying that to our community. That why are we paying more for water? We're having to produce the water, which we can do, we're having to pay more for it, and yet we're still being further rationed when we can pay for and produce enough water to cover our needs?
No, it's a very valid point. We can meet demand on a day-to-day basis, most of the time in the winter, assuming, you know, 100% production level. But when we're coming up with our forecast, we can't assume 100% production from the plant. We wouldn't have done that with plant number one. We won't do that with plant number two. There's maintenance, there's unplanned maintenance, there's planned maintenance, and there's just general interruptions. So we're looking at the drawdown at the reservoir as being the significant factor in determining the need to activate stage three. And so at this time, we feel that this stage-three, at the 40% rationing level Avalon, is the best thing we can do to preserve the groundwater that we have at Middle Ranch, even if it just means, you know, extending our need to go into stage four by a few months, or a few valuable months when our reservoir level is just at about 14% of its capacity.
So it's difficult for, I'm going to fairly say, a majority of the populace here in the city to understand where all of this water in the reservoir is going. I mean, we're rationing, 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 rationing. The city's done an amazing job. Every individual, every business is conserving. We're doing way above and beyond what we've even been asked to do because, you know, we care. But I am not convinced that the city is drawing down the reservoir. And I do feel we have a right to know where the water in the reservoir is going. If a large percentage of that is going to the west end or to camps, or if it is in fact coming to Avalon, we deserve to have that information. And I would like to ask respectfully that Edison make it a priority before August 24th to be able to present that information to our community. This is our opportunity, these public meetings, you guys coming to council, this is our opportunity as a community to get the information, to get the data from you, so that we can make educated decisions how we help our community. This is our right to know if we need to start a massive mailing, if we need to work with a PUC ourselves, what we need to do, but we need the data in order to do that. It doesn't make sense for us to run with all guns loaded if the city is actually not a majority of what the draw is. So respectfully, please, if you guys would make it a priority to get that information so it can be discussed on the open meetings on the 24th, I would greatly appreciate it, and so would members of the community.
Yeah, we'll certainly do what we can there. There are environmental factors, there's a number of variables to Middle Ranch reservoir drawdown. That is the barometer for rationing throughout the island. And, you know, there are customers throughout the island that are subsidizing that plant as well, not just the City of Avalon. There are customers island-wide, too, that are helping to...
That are paying the fees that the city ratepayers are paying? It was like an $18 a month fee and/or a $20 a month fee?
The rate increases would be for...
They are island-wide?
Yeah, the island-wide water system. So they, you know, when we take on capital projects, it's generally across the water utility that customers subsidize those projects.
I am very happy to hear that, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
The city attorney was directed to pursue options for funding, storage capacity, and the city attorney's office has been seeking a meeting with corporate officials for almost a month, and to bring forward a solution that would address the issue of shortage of water that Councilmember Cassidy's talking about in the near term, rather than waiting for the rains or some other uncontrollable source. And he'll be reporting to the city council in the first meeting in September about his work that identified grant money and has a solution that would mitigate the drought water here, but he hasn't heard back on a definite meeting, and I don't expect that that's something you could ask, but it would be good if you could pass on to the folks, to the fine folks there, that we need an answer, and he needs a meeting so that they can give good answers to the city council and to the citizens. We have money, we know what a solution is for the city, and we just need to know if SCE is going to be supportive, which we expect that they will be, but we need to have that information for the city council and the public by the first meeting in September, if that's possible, sir.
So you said the city attorney, Scott, you've sent Edison a letter a month ago, and you haven't got a reply that you wanted yet?
We'd like to have a meeting directly with Edison, just with Edison. We've asked for a meeting with decision-makers of Edison to go over the plan the city council directed us, and Edison has not had that, not scheduled that meeting. Initially, it was they wanted to see how the determination on the $500,000 payment to Edison... Edison was. I said that we need to have the meeting, it's separate. And we still don't have the meeting.
So, have they responded to your request?
The last response I got was that they wanted to have a meeting with not just the city, but the entire consortium. We said that was not appropriate. We want to meet with Edison because we need to get Edison's...
That's out of the question.
...consensus and view on what we believe is a viable solution for the water solution for Avalon.
How do we push Edison a little bit harder here? It's not, and it's not about, it's not a problem with the employees of Edison. They do a bang-up job. They did an incredible job.
We have sent repeated emails, telephone calls as of late as Friday.
So, it's the upper management?
We have an opportunity in our item nine to address this.
That's on our agenda tonight, correct?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so we can talk about that as an agenda item.
Great. Yeah, we could kick it around.
Okay. Anything else for Mr. Lewis? Just a little bit of clarification for, about the rates. The last rate case was based on blended waters, which was reservoir waters and decel waters. If you look at just Avalon, the next rate case they filed, that just filed for Avalon, is going to be decel water and it's probably going to be more than the last case for the blended waters because water on the ground is cheaper than water on the machines. Any questions from the audience for Mr. Lewis?
I don't like that answer.
I know you don't, but I'm sorry. I guess you're done. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
We are now going to go into the hospital board, Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees meeting of Tuesday, August 16th. Could we have the roll? Ma'am?
Trustee Cassidy?
Here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Sampson?
Here.
And Chairman Olson?
Here.
Any announcements? Not seeing any? Any written communication?
I have none.
Not seen any? I believe we have a presentation? Stand up, sit down, stand up, sit down.
Hey, I want to be polite. I'd like to thank the council for allowing us to speak here tonight. Kind of want to give the council an update as to what is going on at the hospital. There's a lot of exciting things happening at this time. One of the things that we've implemented lately is for our veterans that live here on the island, it's called a program called Choices, in which we've negotiated a contract with VA allowing veterans to receive care here rather than having to go over town. We've changed our physician model since, starting this month, actually. We recruited a new physician, Dr. Amy Warren, who is in the crowd, and we're very excited to have her. She will be providing primary care full-time in our clinic from now on. We've also, starting September 1st, we've negotiated a contract with UC Irvine so as that the ER physicians that are all board-certified are providing care in our ER. And I believe that we are greatly enhancing the quality of care that is provided at the hospital. One other item that we've been working on diligently is a hospital replacement or retrofit study because come 2030, we need to meet the seismic standards of California or the hospital gets shut down. I wanted to kind of, before we give our little presentation, throw out some facts about the hospital so that everybody understands what we're kind of talking about. The hospital was built in 1960. At that time, there were about 1,500 individuals that lived in Avalon. We had about 224,000 visitors to the island on an annual basis. Fast forward to now, we have about 4,500 individuals that live on Catalina, plus over a million individuals visiting to the island. And we are still providing healthcare services in the same 14,000-square-foot facility that was built in 1960. That is basically like driving a 1960's Corvair down I-5 going 85 miles an hour. Healthcare has changed rapidly. The difficulties that this has created for us is that there's lack of privacy, there's lack of proper patient flow, there's lack of security for employees and for patients, there's lack of patient comfort. Our HVAC system works intermittently. Some places are hot, some places are cold. We receive a lot of complaints about the temperature of the hospital. You know, it's very difficult to recruit a physician, you know, I hear from the community, the community wants stabilized physicians in our community. They want the same physician every time. It's difficult to recruit a physician to a hospital, a place to work that was built in the 1960s. It's difficult to retain physicians when you have competition around the country that where people can work in very dynamic institutions where new technologies are in place and we're still stuck in the 1960s. Our information system structure greatly lacks. Well, I think probably within the next month, we will be finally getting cat, be getting fiber optic cable to the organization, which will allow us to be able to send radiology films without crashing the system. And of course, we don't meet the seismic standards. But kind of going on with the difficulties and the ability of consumerism and people being able to go elsewhere for their care because they get a better patient experience. The community, when you look at the community as a whole and the individuals that live here, on average, a person spends, the cost of healthcare is about $8,000 per individual. So, we've got 4,500 people, you're looking at about $32 million within our community that are approximately, that is spent on healthcare. CINC collects about $5 million of that. So, that means $27 million is leaving our community and going over town for care because we are not meeting the needs of those individuals. Now, would we ever collect, would we ever be able to provide the care of $32 million? No, because we don't do caths, we don't do radiation oncology, we don't do very high-end expensive things of care, and we never will. But there are things that we can do that would allow us to generate and keep that money in our own town in Avalon because it's going to be spent one way or another, so might as well reinvest it into Avalon. And that would be oncology so as that patients wouldn't have to travel the boat every time they had to get infusion therapy if they had cancer. That would be infusion therapy. There's a lot of surgeries that we could do that would be outpatient-based surgery. And of course, and we are working on this at this time, and that is regaining and being the place of choice for primary care. We have seen a great deal of decrease, decline in the number of patients that we see, but I believe that has a lot to do with some of the operations in our clinic and also the lack of stability with physicians in our clinic. One of the things that was, we start talking about and as my counterparts, consultants that I've worked with for many years, we've been doing this analysis and they're going to dive into it. The things that I want to kind of point out is it is financially feasible for us to have a new hospital and a wellness center and in a aquatic center, all to promote health, safety, and wellness within our community. We cannot continue the loss of relevance within our community by allowing people to go elsewhere. Seeing, you know, as you go over town, you can see the amount of money and capital that is spent on infrastructure and healthcare system. We have a very fragile system and unless we become competitive with those hospital systems over here, over town, we are going to become irrelevant. We're going to have greater declines in profitability. And I don't want to say what the end outcome could be. We need to reinvent healthcare on Catalina Island. We need to reinvest into the healthcare system. And we can become not just a surviving hospital, which I believe it has done for many, many years, but a thriving hospital that can provide care both to our local citizens and also work with visitors that come here and provide medical cosmetology. There are other procedures whereas if you build the right relationship with physicians, people will come. Catalina is a very unique place and I think that the greatest asset that our hospital has is not only the people that work there, but the location. And we can get individuals from out of town to come help subsidize healthcare within our hometown. Thank you. I'd like to introduce Michael and Brian. They're, they've built hospitals all over the country and they're experts in this field. And they'll kind of give you a little bit of an idea as to what we've been doing and the data that we've been looking at. And please, feel free to ask questions. We like it.
Thank you, Jason, thanks. My name is Brian Hopola. I work with consulting company called Stroud Water Associates. And Jason had us come in to really provide an objective and independent opinion as it relates to many of the ideas that he's just expressed. I'm from a rural community, a town of about 3,000 people myself, and I understand how important hospitals and healthcare are to rural communities. But we also recognize that there is no reason to go down a road to try to develop something that's not feasible. So, we've looked at this very independently and comprehensively. As he mentioned, we've really compiled input from a broad variety of people who are very experienced in this, including an architect and those of us who have done a lot of strategic planning and feasibility work. And Jason mentioned a lot of the deficiencies in the existing facility. And we did, in fact, as part of the study, look at the opportunity to renovate the existing facility and for a long variety of different reasons as it relates to the seismic requirements and et cetera, the lack of space, that is not a viable option. And that has led a recommendation to look at developing a new facility that is sized to meet the community's needs, as Jason mentioned. It's really important for the council to understand that what we're proposing, you continue to work on as a community, is not something that I've developed from my home, which happens to be Portland, Maine, and even Jason, who of course lives here on the island. This has been a process in terms of establishing a vision that has involved a lot of folks from the community, members of the board, members of the foundation, Joe, Councilor Sampson, thank you for coming to some sessions. We're really trying to get a broad spectrum of input as it relates to what the needs of this year-round population are. And I appreciate Jason mentioning that as healthcare is changing, it is important to really look at the residents of the island here and understand how the medical center can start to change what it's doing for the residents so that they can become healthier and focus more on wellness and prevention. So, you see a vision that's established and really is able to guide this project to meet the needs of this community. And so, we looked at a lot of data, pages and pages of data, but understanding that we have just under 5,000 people projected to be living on island year-round in the upcoming next five or six years and understanding really an important factor from medical planning, which is this community is aging. So, a large part of the growth and certainly from a medical perspective, many of the users of medical services are 65 years and older and it's an important population for us to be thinking about as it relates to keeping those folks on island, not just as Jason's saying for complex care, but for routine care as well. That's a little difficult to read, but we went through a very deliberate planning process looking at all of the potential kind of services that are available and how this organization, Catalina Island Medical Center, could establish a vision to retain this care locally. And so, this is the result of that, as Jason mentioned, looking at the development of surgery procedures on island, ambulatory procedures, and then really building up the other services, recognizing, as he mentioned, that there is a lot of care that goes over town currently. And those dollars that are lost have a real ripple effect in the community. Jason also mentioned in his introductory comments, a real important opportunity, and I've worked with resort communities from really across the country. Nantucket Community Hospital, Cottage Hospital is replacing their hospital. In Massachusetts, there's a lot of resort communities, including Big Sky Montana, other places where we've worked. And this idea about being able to really help support the development of this infrastructure, which you'll see here in a moment, is very expensive infrastructure to develop, but being able to tap into some of those other dollars and be utilizing those to offset some of the burden frankly that falls onto the year-round population, it's a really important strategy and a very viable strategy. And so, you see of the rounding up approximately a million visitors, that there's just a tremendous amount of resource there and you're capturing about 1% of it here locally, primarily related to folks that are using emergency services on island and then being sent away as quickly as possible. And so, the ideas that Jason mentioned and others certainly that will surface, you know, every dollar that we're able to add to the pot, so to speak, will just help from a viability perspective so that you can provide that infrastructure and resource to the folks that are here year-round. There's a lot of economic study that is done and papers that are published around what this ripple effect looks like. And as an industry, at the top, healthcare industry in particular, we know that the households, the folks that are employed by that, very good jobs for rural communities and those folks spending money on island creates a recirculation effect of dollars. And so, the way to think of this is for every dollar that's spent locally in healthcare, approximately $5 million, there's a 20%, about 21 cents of additional economic activity that gets generated as a result of that. So, we're, as a hospital today, supporting about another million dollars of local economic activity with just what's happening today. And so, part of this idea about utilizing the resources that are available, certainly utilizing the existing facility until a new one gets developed, it's important for the public and certainly as the council, it's important to really understand how those dollars stay in the community and continue to support additional economic activity, additional jobs, et cetera. So, it's a really important community development and economic development goal. The hospital's not standing still. I think you, those of you who have met Jason in the past, get the sense that he likes to move quickly. I think he's made a tremendous number of changes already. As he mentioned, I've actually worked with him in two of his other organizations and I think that you will talk to people in those communities and also find out that he's had a good track record. So, congratulations in your selection and, you know, buckle in. Jason's moving things along. The service mix of the existing facility is really constrained by the size of the building. Things are shoehorned in frankly in 18 years of doing this kind of work in ways that I hadn't seen before. Understanding, again, why you have what you have, the opportunity to provide emergency care in a very timely manner with a couple rooms that you have today is very different than being able to do it with what we would call 10 points of care that we've planned to be in a new facility. And you see a long list of services there, being able to increase the number of beds and spaces that are available for extended care, recognizing that there are folks that do not have access to those services today and would like to be on island for that. And so, we've planned for those kinds of things. And Jason mentioned a number of new services there and they are all very important contributors. But the one I'd like to just underscore is the idea of being able to do wellness, fitness, and prevention kind of programming as it relates to the community's overall health and the improvement of that overall health status. If you look at the bottom line, this is a very important investment, roughly $60 million. One of the things, as I mentioned, in terms of understanding the feasibility is being able to have some reliable numbers and recognizing that even a decision that was made today, and we're not asking for a decision at all, but, you know, these projects take time to develop, these costs have been inflated to be assuming a construction in the 2018 or 2019 timeframe, just to give you a sense. So, there's cost escalation that's built into these numbers, but medical services as a result of a very, very intensive regulatory environment in the state of California, they are very, very expensive to build. So, we're looking at budgets of around $1,000 per square foot. So, the overall facility today is about 14,000 square feet and the planned facility as of today, including the wellness services, would be about 60,000 square feet. I mentioned it is important to look at financial feasibility. What I would say with this is understanding hospitals and healthcare finance is complicated for sure, but we've done the detailed study and are comfortable saying... for sure, but we've done the detailed study and are comfortable saying that a project of this size and magnitude can be supported. Now, it needs to be supported in a lot of different kind of ways, and one of the things that when you do planning is, I can't exactly stand here and say which of the numbers on this page are exactly correct. So we want to come up with some ranges and be able to look at some scenarios as it relates to how this project could get funded. It is important to recognize that a project of this size needs to have a lot of community support, and a part of the community's support are capital campaigns. Those are generally measured in two ways. One is how much money can we raise overall? And a lot of work at the foundation is getting started to see what is really realistic. The other really important thing with capital campaigns is overall participation rates from the community. So even if folks do not have $1 million to give, because none of us, very few of us do, participating at $5 or $10 levels is also important, just to show the community's support. It's important for the third bullet point down there because when you go to get a loan, and we're recommending that the organization looks at the United States Department of Agriculture Program, it's called the Community Facilities Program. It's a low-interest rate program, 3% to 3.5% interest for a 35-year loan. It's kind of the cheapest money that's available. They do a lot of healthcare projects. They've done $2 billion worth of lending to rural communities in this past year. So it's a well-established program. But one of the things that they're going to emphasize a lot is the community behind this. And so the participation in the planning process is part of that, understanding what the capital campaign looks like is part of that. And then there may need to be other fees. Of course, there is an existing sales tax and some other non-operating revenue sources to support this. We are anticipating that this would be available in 2020, and that is a realistic timeframe, but certainly one that's going to require Jason to keep his foot on the accelerator. I'm not an architect. I do like to draw things. I didn't draw this, but this kind of gives you a sense of the scale of the overall building. Now, the architects, who I can pick on him because he had to catch the 5:30 ferry back, did not render in any golf carts to the picture here, but, you know, there's a lot of different things that the design team can do to help educate the community as it relates to what services are provided and what kind of building appearance that might look like. And while looks aren't everything, certainly as we're trying to change behaviors, people going over town for services, we're trying to appeal to visitor population, we're looking for some medical tourism to bring people to the island, having a building that's very credible-looking and looks like something that you might see when you go over town is really important overall. So I'm going to pause there. I'm happy to answer any questions on what's been presented or defer, do you have closing comments, Jason?
No, I have one. Has there been any discussion about whether or not the hospital could be owned by itself rather than the city?
Yeah, there is absolutely no reason as to why the city has to own the hospital, and the hospital could be spun off. It would just be a matter of changing our contractual arrangement.
I don't even know that we would want to do that. I'm just curious because really, the city owns the building, right? Does the city own the land?
Yes.
Okay. So the city owns a building and the land and where it's at right now. And I, I mean, does it really, could the city just lease land to the hospital or?
We didn't.
I guess what we're ultimately saying is that taxpayers are going to pay for a new hospital, right?
Mm-mm.
Taxpayers, contributors, plethora of sources. It's not going to be a sole point, sole source. Can't be a sole source unless you've got $60 million in your pocket.
The fact is, this hospital has had such a lack of reinvestment into it over the 55 years that it's been around, that a lot of the capital funds that should have been reinvested in it were reinvested into operations. And we are now at a point that there is no way that a hospital can be built and operated and making the financing payments without some type of public support. Now, I'm not saying that is a sales tax. The one thing that we have thought about and spoken about, and, you know, I might as well just be completely honest about it, is a potential head tax on visitors that come to the island and utilize our services. A $2 head tax would probably cover the cost of a new facility. We would go out, get the loan, amortize that over a 35- to 40-year period, and then a million visitors would generate approximately $2 million or $1 point, you know, based on, we'd have to have a year or two to see what kind of funds it would generate to make those financing payments. But with that type of investment from visitors to our island, we would, you know, we would get some things that we need. We would get a new, modern healthcare facility, ensuring a health system for the future. We would get a fitness and wellness facility, and we would get an aquatic center in order to teach our children how to swim and promote a healthy lifestyle and be able to provide physical therapy in a pools-type setting. We would be a competitive healthcare system to hospitals over town.
Mayor, could I ask a question about the financing side?
Mm-hmm.
You're saying that in Los Angeles County, even though we're an urban county, and I mean, this is good news if it's true, that the U.S. Department of Agriculture, I assume through the Farmer's Home Administration or some version of that, that projects here are eligible. Is that correct?
They absolutely are eligible. The determination that USDA makes is on the location of the specific project. So I'm working in, on the border town in Arizona, which is actually part of the metropolitan area of Yuma, Arizona, and they are eligible because they're a small town, even though they're in the MSA.
Yeah, we're a small town on an island, which, Mayor, this is delightful news. I mean, it's great news for a lot of funding.
You know, you're absolutely right, Mr. Manager, that the program has a specific bent towards healthcare, but is also for other basic community facilities. And so as a source of funding for other kinds of projects, it is absolutely available, and we'd be happy to refer you to some folks that are there.
Okay.
And so there's no real way to, and I know that this isn't part of our discussion, I'm just curious, there's no way to use the land that we have now for the hospital? That building is, as I understand it, come to its...
There is not. And we've looked at it every possible way, and it's not a possibility.
The one correlation that I would kind of make is if you've been through an airport when it's being remodeled, compound that by 50 times how miserable it is. I mean, to remodel a facility while you're taking care of patients, it just does not work. And the end result also is that most times, it costs just as much, if not more, to remodel, and then you add on to it, you still never get the needs, you get something that's done not appropriately for the services you need to provide, because you're already stuck in some constraints.
So what you're absolutely proposing, and it sounds great to me, and also I've been to study some of your sessions, your study sessions as well, is this would also promote tourism to Avalon as well, correct?
I believe it would. The dollars out there that consumers are spending on healthcare tourism is enormous, billions of dollars.
So the hospital doesn't necessarily have to be a deficiency to the community. It can, I mean, as far as financially, it can actually be an asset to us, correct?
Well, it is already an asset, but it could be even more of an asset.
Yes. Otherwise, we wouldn't have to put money out of the general funds in order to operate the hospital it would run on its own capital.
Given time, my goal is to get the hospital to the point of financial stability and enough days' cash on hand where we would not need the sales tax anymore.
Or redirect it to Avalon.
So we're back to the old question of land.
Yep, great.
Low-revolving thing it's been.
We are in talks with the island company, and the island company is very supportive of improving the healthcare system in our community.
Good to know.
That's great news.
That's good to know.
It's very optimistic. The study sessions have been really positive. It's pretty amazing where this is going, and these guys have done amazing work, from what I've seen personally, and I do believe that this is going in a good direction. We could be, we could be a premier healthcare system within the healthcare systems in our nation out here. Doctors would come here and patients would come here to get care, health and wellness as well, preventive care as well. This is a perfect place for it.
I do believe that Catalina is a destination where healthcare tourism could truly take foot. I mean, we have 22 million people an hour away. People go to Mexico, they go to the Caribbean, they go to Colorado in order to see one specific physician or one specific provider. If you build the relationships with the right providers, the patients will come. It's all about building that right relationship and having the quality score indicators and having the patient experience that people are shopping for. People will pay out of pocket for that type of care.
Well, I would warn you, don't look solely at the head tax, because the state looks a lot at the head tax, too, because it's money generated in the state of Thailand, and we've got to have some money on the side so they kind of seem equal. It's a doable thing.
Any other questions?
No, that's great. Thanks for the visuals.
Thanks, Jason.
Those are new. That's great.
Yep. We will now finish out the rest of the agenda. Oral communication. The Board of Trustees will accept comments from the public this time. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. At this meeting, speakers should limit their comments to three minutes or less. It's Michael.
Hello. Michael Ponce, Chairman of the Board of the Avalon Medical Center. These gentlemen behind me have done an excellent job bringing this to you. Now that my mother is a resident in the hospital, I'm sorry, but we have a substandard facility, and I feel bad that families that have grown up here on the island have loved ones that are staying there in substandard, where doors are too small, bathrooms are too small. We need a new hospital. Bottom line is, we need a new facility. We cannot be putting bandages on this anymore. We need to move it into the future. So I just wanted to say that personally and as Chair of the Board.
Thanks, Michael. Any other public comment? Nope.
I'm Judy Hibbs, and I work at the hospital and have been a resident here for 20 years full-time and visiting for 45. And I just want to recognize all of the employees that are here. So if the employees of the hospital would stand, these are very hard-working, busy people, and they're in the back. Jason, and the employees care about the patients. And oftentimes, our service and our ratings, or whatever you want to call it, are based on our facility. People come in and kind of go, ooh, and that's not fair, because we have really hard-working people, we have excellent healthcare providers, we have a new doctor who will be starting with us September 1st, we have the UCI doctors in the emergency room, and everybody is giving 150%. So what we need is for the city, council, the community, and the citizens of Avalon to come alongside the work that we envision for having a better facility, a new facility, something that meets everyone's needs and that we can be proud of and that we can grow into and that we can share with visitors as they come. Our cruise ships rely on having the medical center. If we continue in this direction that we're going now, we may lose a lot of our tourism because of not making the change to a brighter, more modern, more effective facility. So I just want to thank everybody who came out to support the hospital and let you know that we look forward to your input in this process, and whatever we can do to make this happen, we hope to work together on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
What would the next steps be for the Board of Trustees?
Until they come with their handout, I don't think there's any other steps we take. I don't, really, there's anyone involved from the Board of Trustees?
I think the next step is for the Chair of the Board of Trustees not to have a conversation.
So moved.
You're buying. Thanks, Dex. Thanks, all of you for coming.
We'll continue the study sessions as well, right? Or is that complete for right now?
It's complete now.
Okay. Well, it's a great report, and I thank you, and it was really an honor working with you guys and seeing exactly what your vision is for the island, and thank you for your efforts. It's going to pay off, I think. I hope so.
It will. Confidence. Ms. Reddy, can we do the rest of the consent calendar? You want me to do this consent calendar?
Whatever you'd like.
You can do it, I can do it.
One more guy.
Oh, we do, another speaker?
Come on up. Come on up, Mike.
Hi, I'm Mike Rousong. I am the Facility Maintenance Manager at the hospital. First of all, I'd like to thank the city and the council for its continued support and cooperation in helping the hospital out on so many different levels. I'd just like to say that our hospital is aging. Hospitals are designed with a 50-year useful lifespan. We are at 56 years. We deal with facility challenges every day. We're keeping her together, but the cost we're doing, so we're getting higher and higher. The plumbing, wiring, HVAC, and other basic systems in the building are not only expensive to maintain, but are not designed for the current healthcare needs. Our staff is a group of dedicated healthcare professionals that are dedicated to keeping quality of healthcare on this island for its locals and visitors. We're asking for the continued support from the city and the community as we plan to build a new hospital to carry us into the next 50 years. Thanks.
Thanks. Thanks, Mike.
I've been a resident for over 20 years, and I work at the hospital, and I wanted to share an experience that I just had. My daughter's been in the hospital for about 37 days over town, and part of the reason is because we don't have the storage over at our hospital to keep her medicine here. And I feel that if we had a new hospital, we could store that stuff better, and I know I'm only one of thousands of people over here that experienced that. I also am going through cancer, and I have to go over town a lot. And a lot of the stuff that I get done over town, if we had a hospital here, I wouldn't have to go over. And it costs thousands and thousands of dollars out of my pocket to have to go over all the time. And I know that I'm only one person in this town, and I feel a lot of people in this town have to go through that. So if we had a new hospital, it would take a lot of stress off most people in town. So in my opinion, we do need a new hospital. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ruby.
I think all of us understand that and agree with you. I myself try to make the hospital here my local doctor. Consent calendar now.
There's two items on the consent calendar. The first one is the Board of Trustees' actions from the July 19, 2016 meeting. Second item is the Chief Executive Officer's Board Report for July 2016 and the Chief Financial Officer's Report for June of 2016.
Council comments?
I'll make a motion to approve consent, calendar items one and two.
Thank you, ma'am. Second, any discussion from the audience? Call for the vote.
Four ayes and one absent. Mayor Marshall.
I see no general business. I have no report. Members have any report?
I have none.
I have none.
I have none. We're adjourned. We'll go back to the council meeting. Is that the first, the first thing on the general, on the consent calendar, isn't it? On the regular calendar?
Yes.
I don't have a big...
Consent calendar. Somebody's got a big heartache on the consent calendar?
Do we have another presentation? Oh, no.
Concept, design, budget, schedule.
We're removing number one. Number one.
Must have been something he ate.
Pick it up.
Are we waiting for Scotty? Are we waiting for Scotty? He's official timer.
Yeah, we gotta wait for him.
Self-appointed.
But he does it so well, too. I better check the bill. It might be, it might be a special charge there. We will be back in the council meeting now and we're going to go with the oral communication. Members of the public may address the City Council at this time. No action will be taken on non-agenda items at this meeting. Speakers should limit their comments to three minutes each. If you want to speak, please go to the podium. Not making the turn. Okay, I guess we have no oral communication. We'll go to the consent calendar, Ms. Ready?
No, Mr. Jenkins.
No, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, the consent calendar are considered to be routine items that are before the council. There's generally, for those items, no separate discussion unless there is a specific question or concern to discuss it, in which case either by the public or the council, in which case it should be removed from the consent. We are asking that item number one be removed from the consent calendar and off the agenda. Item number two is our expenditures submitted for approval. The warrants in the amount of $1,959,893.66. Two payrolls in the amount of $463,629 and I suspect that's 80 cents. Four electronic fund transfers in the amount of $803,157.62. The recommendation is to approve the total expenditure amount of $3,226,681.9. Item number two is award of annual contract to perform business revenue audits. The city of Avalon has annually engaged in an accounting firm to audit businesses operating within the city to ensure that they are properly paying revenues to the city. Such revenues are derived from transient occupancy tax, tax revenues, harbor use fees, admission fees, percentage rent payments and warfage fees. We recommend that the council authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Brownell and Duffy CPAs in the amount not to exceed $30,000 to perform an annual business revenue audits. Item number four is a equipment purchase and request for proposals of site work and installation. Avalon Canyon Trail, Fit Trail Project. The city has received a grant in the amount of $299,700 from the Los Angeles County Regional Park and Open Space District with the assistance of our fine supervisor, Don Kenaby. The grant category was specifically for urbanized rural trail projects. The Avalon Fit Trail Project, which qualifies as such, will be construct two outdoor fitness zones, one of the People's Park and one at Joe Machado Field with signage, mile markers, exercises along Avalon Canyon Road linking the two zones together. The recommended action is to authorize a purchase of equipment for the Avalon Canyon Fit Trail Project in the amount of $76,426.39. Approval of the site plan and approval of public bid bidding the site work and equipment installation. Fourth, fifth is to declare three 1994 Molly trolleys as surplus property. The city of Avalon Public Transit System has been updated over the last few months, as you know, council members and public. And the 394 Molly trolleys were taken out of commission and replaced with three all-electric buses. Staff has researched the value and determines they may be worth a base salary, a base amount of $10,000. Staff would like to initiate a sealed bid process for the sale of the trolleys with a minimum required bid of $10,000 per trolley. We recommend that you authorize, you declare the, excuse me, the equipment surplus and you authorize city manager to dispose of it properly by selling it at the highest bidder. We have approval of a position of the job description for a position that you have in your budget already. It's for the senior accountant position. I know the director, I and I and others appreciate your, your continuing work to strengthen the city's finance system and this, this position will, will assist in that regard. There is, so the recommendation is to approve the new job description for the senior accountant position and authorize the city manager to fill the position. Of course, we will do that competitively. We'll do it open to people here, but we'll also open it to the public, to people internally and to the people in the public. Seven is a resolution adopting the Gateway Cities Council of Governments' position opposing the MTA Expenditure Plan for the 2016 Proposed Ballot Measure. And this was fortunately a request that Councilmember Cassidy is requesting that the council adopt a resolution requested by the Gateway Cities Council of Governments opposing a measure on the 2016 ballot. The staff report reflects the reasons why they are opposed to this measure. We recommend that the adoption of a resolution supporting the Gateway Cities Council of Governments' position opposing MTA Expenditure Plan for the 2016 Proposed Ballot Measure. And I understand that there needs to be an amendment that Councilmember Cassidy may wish to remove this from consent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So we're removing number seven. Any other ones want, need to be removed?
Nope. I don't believe so. Not, not on my behalf.
Nope. I'm good.
Make a motion. Anybody in the public have an issue on any one through six? I'll undertake a motion.
No, not one.
Oh, yes. Two, two to six.
Two through six.
Two to six. I'll make a motion to approve. Items two through six.
Further discussion? Call for the vote.
Four eyes and one absent. Mayor Marshall.
Item seven.
So on item number seven, the actual, which is kind of detailed in the packet, the, the request is not only to support the opposition of the ballot measure as it's written, but also to participate. Each one of the Gateway Cities is being asked to participate by contributing $10,000 to the initiative, which that would be, I wrote my earmark specifically for information, for unbiased information to go out publicly. And the, the particular wording that we would be asking for would be to oppose the adopted ballot measure expenditure plan and approve the allocation of only $5,000 to the Gateway Cog to assist in financing a public education program sponsored by member cities for purely neutral education, educational purposes regarding the ballot measure and its impacts. I, I guess it would be fair to say that I believe the $10,000 for the city of Avalon is an amount that, that we would really be unable to do and it's a, and a budget item that would be difficult for us to participate in. But as a member city who receives over a million visitors a year that are directly affected by this ballot measure, I, I do believe that we should participate on a level, but, but I felt that $10,000 would be too much from our budget. But if we could approve something less than that to participate, I would like to ask the council to agree with me and, and do that.
And it's strictly public information? It's not campaigning either way?
Yes. Unbiased, strictly educational.
That would be the condition that you would impose.
That, yes.
It's the only thing we can do.
Yes, that, that is correct.
Discussion?
This is the organization that can potentially help us in the future with some of our roads, right?
Oh, I will tell you that staff member Audrey McDonald has just been so much value in our participation in the Gateway Cities with, with Metro, the MTA, the, the whole, our history. And prior council member Michael Ponce would also, I'm sure, agree with me that sometimes these things are really critical, that we help participate. And that's part of what being a member of these organizations is about, is working together to get word, get the word out there, to help each other out. And, you know, we, we could be in a real water crisis coming up and, you know, we may need support at some point. So
We are.
It's kind of, well, you know what I mean?
We've got some needs.
Yeah, yeah. So there's, there's times where we just help each other out. And in my two years being on the Gateway Cog, this is the first time that we've been asked to help. And it's, it's a critical moment. We only have 60 days or so before the, the measures on the ballot. And so just to make sure that information is out there so everybody can make an educated decision when they get to the ballot.
And Avalon being part of the cog is very important and that Avalon's participation with the cog is very important. For a long time, we were not involved. So we were not getting information. That when I would attend a meeting and I'd look at a map of the cog, the island was there, but there was no dot showing that Avalon was there. So by being there, they are now including us in studies they do, traffic studies.
Funding opportunities.
Homelessness, the whole, the whole thing. They're, they're finally remembering that Avalon is part of the cog. And I believe this is a cog decision that this is not beneficial to the cities that are part of that cog. So I would encourage your support of the cog.
Thank you, Michael. Do I have a motion, ma'am?
So that would be, I guess my motion would be to adopt a resolution of the city council supporting the Gateway Cities Council of Government position opposing MTA Expenditure Plan for the 2016 Proposed Ballot Measure. And also the resolution to reflect that we oppose the adopted ballot measure expenditure plan and number two approves the allocation of $5,000 to the Gateway Cog to assist in financing a public education program sponsored by member cities for purely neutral educational purposes regarding the ballot measure and its impacts.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Council discussion? Public? Call for the vote.
Four eyes and one absent. Mayor Marshall.
Still absent.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Jenkins.
It's good work.
Oh, I guess it's going to be Dan. Hi, Dan.
Thank you. For those that stay, it feels like we need to do some calisthenics in here or for the yogis, a downward dog or something to kind of stretch out a little bit before we get started. Thank you, council members, for hearing this presentation and opening up the discussion. What I recommend is the council discuss the approved Mall Park project. Give staff direct direction to any changes the council would like to see to the proposed amenities and authorize the city manager to publicly bid the site work, purchase of equipment and installation for the new project. I'd like to take it back a little bit to what has been approved and then some of the feedback that we've gotten in the community in regards to that and then possibly some options for consideration. So at this time in your pack out, in your packet, excuse me, you have a layout to the proposed amenities for Mall Park. Funding was available through a grant. Again, thank you Supervisor Kenaby for that. Council, $300,000. Council has also budgeted $75,000 out of the general fund in this fiscal year. And through a Prop A grant, there's another $95,000 and change of additional funding, giving the project a total of $470,072. The project that's been proposed is removing the existing play structure at Mall Park. It's an older structure. It has some areas that have been boarded up. It has some surfacing issues. It has some certification issues and it being too close in terms of the play use zones. So removing that structure, putting in a, and you'll see it in your, your packet as well, a really nicely done themed, pirate-themed play ship with climbing structures, with slides on it, lots of exploration opportunities there. That project will take a good portion, will take all the portion of the existing layout and then it will encompass about a third of the volleyball court at this point. Furthermore, the project that's been proposed offers opportunity for swings. I think there was some discussion about getting swings in the community as there are no swings as, as I'm aware of. And I've kind of searched high and low at this point to find swings. So five swings there, two of them being bucket swings for younger children, toddlers, belt swings, two belt swings for adolescents, and then what they call an expression swing, which, excuse me, for the staff report, I put in there was a special need swing. There's an opportunity for a special need swing if that's something we decided we want to do instead. But the expression swing itself is also a bucket swing that partners a parent with a, an, a toddler on the swing. So there's face-to-face interaction and it's kind of a neat, you know, neat thing for a parent and a, and adolescent to, to do at the same time. Five swings and then moving forward to the basketball court. The basketball court will be shrunk in size from its 53 feet of play area, and you see a picture up on the screen here as well, to about 45 feet. So we lose about eight feet. The current configuration of the basketball court is two baskets in the middle of the playground, the play basketball area. The new configuration on a little smaller court will be a single hoop. We're proposing it's a glass, you know, glass hoop to, to take its place. So losing two...
We, we can't see the presentation. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you that way, but...
I mean, you do have in your packet...
What you're showing on the screen is this.
Exactly. It's the same thing. It's just the overall layout of the, the new proposed structure. And then further improvements throughout the area would be redoing the fencing. The fencing is tired. It looks tired. What's being proposed is a wrought iron fence, possibly to match maybe the, the railing that goes around the mole. So there's a tie-in there. The new play structure has some nice shade areas where the shaded, there are actually shade sails that are above it. The shade sail that's there is a smaller one. It was an aftermath. So this one would be integrated into the, the proposal. Benches are placed throughout the facility and I think that takes you through what's being, what's been proposed and what was originally approved at the council meeting, the design meeting, council meeting and the budget meeting. Day one, I was nicely greeted here. I was nicely greeted in the, you know, in the community. But pretty early on, were questions about the volleyball court and what can we do about possibly losing the volleyball court. I have proposed in your packet, another option for consideration and discussion. And I appreciate both those four, option one, and we'll call this one option two, because I think we'll hear both sides of the public on this. But what we're proposing in option two would, the play structure that's been proposed, continue it with the pirate theme that's been, that you see pictures of. It reduces in size by about one-third. We pull it out of the, we create a little more space with moving some of the retaining walls for the landscape beds in the current area. We pull it out of the volleyball court. So it does gain some space and we utilize that space a little better than what's being used now. The volleyball court stays intact. Also, the basketball court stays intact in terms of its size. It stays at a 53-foot court. And then we propose that we put back in two baskets instead of the configuration with option one and just the one basket. option one and just the one basket. Regardless of the basketball configuration, I'm sorry to mention that a surfacing will be put down, it's a sport court surfacing, it's a tile, it's a plastic tile for both indoor and outdoor type. Surface play will be put down on that court over the existing concrete, it's striped floor baskets, you'll have a, you know, a three-point line, you'll have a free throw line in some of those amenities you'd see on a traditional basketball court. Both projects come within budget, excuse me, option two, if I can further say, will provide some swings, we proposed to put some swings a little further up the mole. We have an area where there's currently picnic benches, there's two sets of picnic benches, two sets each, and then two barbecue pits. Those will just be moved a little further out on some of the dirt area that's there, and we would propose that as part of option two, that two swings, one bucket and one toddler swing would go into that spot with also the rubberized surfacing. I think that completes option two. Both programs, option one and option two, do come within budgets and meet that, the budgeting criteria. We're proposing, and we need to go out to bit on this, but proposing that option one is going to cost about $462,000 to complete, and then option two, not having as much surfacing, not having as much playground equipment, keeping the volleyball court intact, will cost about $375,000 to complete. So that is the overall presentation. I'm open for questions.
Questions for Dan?
Yeah.
Swings, you can't.
Yeah, he did talk about swings.
Yeah, swings, two swings.
He did talk about two swings. In option two, you got two swings in the format, in the space that you have, you can't put any more than two swings in there, like two full-size and then one toddler?
We're proposing two swings to start with, more swings can go in, it's going to be above and beyond the $375,000 if that's the direction of council.
Let me ask you, but you're keeping the barbecue pits and the benches out there, which is good, right? I mean.
We are planning on keeping that, that's a very important aspect of what's happening out there.
Absolutely.
We'd like to take it a step further, and we're meeting tomorrow with Audra on some possible funding there, where.
Enhancements?
Go above and beyond, and possibly put pads down there, put a shade structure of some sorts over there, really enhance that over, that barbecue area, picnic area as it is now.
Nice, I like that idea, because that's, that area's looking a little shabby, it leaves a little.
It's looking a little shabby, and we do some things with sails, you know, similar sails to what's over the playground to kind of tie the two areas back together.
And it's well-used as well.
It's very well-used.
Yeah, the community likes that out there.
Any other questions for Dan?
Yeah, I just, I first want to say to all the members of the public, we've, and most everybody in this room, I would presume, are the actual persons behind all of the letters that we've received on either side. So first, thank you so much for taking the time to actually write us a letter, and also for Debbie Wright. I know I saw you earlier today, but Debbie started a comment thread on Facebook, and I know that that is not, you know, entered into the record, so to speak, but I know I will speak for both Mayor Marshall and myself, that we have appreciated reading all of those comments. I would like to encourage everybody that, you know, that is a good avenue to have conversation, and it's good to hear what other, what everybody has to say. There's been a lot of great ideas that have come from that thread, and in thinking of it, there's been such overwhelming support for keeping the volleyball court, and, you know, in my research and trying to figure out, you know, what is the right thing to do, how do we move forward, some of the things that had come to mind were, can we reprogram that space as far as, can we find programs that utilize that space, can we do different activities in that space, can we make it work for more than volleyball, which, you know, there is the valid argument that the court doesn't get used that much except for a couple months of the summer, and even then a few hours a day. And one of the recommendations that was posted today was for, why not focus on creating a need for it within our local community as well as our visitors, lessons, leagues, summer nightly tournaments, offering an alternative net for badminton, which might be more family-friendly, and aesthetically pleasing, you know, things like colorful sun shades that would help prevent the balls from going in the street, which is also another concern. So I'm, I guess from my perspective, I would really like to see, to charge the Community Services and Recreation Department to look at repurposing, or recreating the space and using it more for just, more than just volleyball, and making it maybe more aesthetically pleasing, and a little safer as far as, you know, the ball's going over the fence and whatnot, and then, you know, obviously to put some effort into programming the space.
There is a real opportunity there, I believe, and I appreciate your challenge and staff to get in and find those opportunities. One of the things that we will be doing here fairly soon, I hope to have it out by the end of the week, is doing a recreation needs assessment. I'm going to get it to the city manager tomorrow, he'll take a look at it, get some input, and get it out to the community. So that type of feedback, we might see some program opportunities that come out of that. I could easily go, we need this, this, and this, but I'd like to hear from the community first in terms of what they'd like to see out there. But sand soccer's been kicked around, there's a beach tennis game that you can play, badminton's a kind of a neat idea, where you could, a couple days a week, take it off of the, you know, take it out of the loop of volleyball and have other multi-use type things going on in there.
And what about, is there, has there been any discussion about the aesthetics of it? I mean, we, I think on all fronts, we agree that the chain link fencing is an eyesore, it doesn't really welcome visitors to this beautiful community of ours. What have you guys come up with, or have you come up with some ideas? In terms of keeping the volleyball court, if we were to have just kept the basketball court, then it would be a lot less fencing around it, but in keeping both, in keeping that much fencing, have you, have you guys thought of any alternative solutions to making it more appealing?
The plans with the swings was to have some fencing along the backside, the street side there, so there would have been a fence line there. It would have been shorter, certainly. What's being proposed now is it's wrought iron fence, and something that might blend into what's happening down there. We are meeting with a consultant tomorrow morning in regards to, excuse me, Thursday morning, in regards to whatever plan is chosen moving forward, and so we'll have some more discussions about fences and some options there.
I think anything you put up there would look better than the president's fence.
Oh, agree to that, for sure, but I also, you know, some of the comments that we've received in letters and whatnot is, you know, I've, I hear it, that that coming off of a boat, walking through the mole, which we all already agree that needs to be redone, and then revitalizing that whole area. I mean, we've spent quite a bit of money in community outreach, and all of that information coming back to us is that our community wants to see that whole area revitalized, looking better, cleaner, sharper, but also, you know, a safe environment. And I, I am a little bit concerned about that area being a huge wrought iron fenced-in area. I mean, would that be worse than chain link? You know, I want to make sure that we address what that could look like, how we could do that better, in trying to meet the needs of all parts of the community that want to, you know, make it visually appealing, but then also keep the court. How do we do both?
You know, let me ask you something. Is there a chance that if we did keep the volleyball courts, because she was talking, Councilman Cassidy was talking about multipurpose, make it something that maybe we could utilize in the wintertime, maybe have a cover over the top? If not, just have something that's aesthetically more pleasing and keeps the balls from going out over the top? Maybe something we could utilize in the wintertime as well, I mean, because we used, I know we used to have volleyball leagues here. I mean, the city, the city used to promote, the city recreation department used to have, I believe, a volleyball tournaments, you know, we have like four teams, like we do with Little League football, basketball.
Yeah, three teams.
I think that's, that's a direction that we could go. I mean, we always, obviously have the support of the youth of Avalon right now, that absolutely need more, more things to do. I mean, they showed up here, kids don't come to city council meetings.
Sure they do.
No, they don't.
Unless, unless it's something that they find that is really important to them, and that's, we've, we've had a challenge lately, finding our youth, our middle-aged teenagers and some recreation opportunities. So I think this is, this is a challenge for our community, not to just, and for, for the city council as well, to find a solution here that makes it better for the concerns of the people that absolutely want it gone, which most of them are the safety concerns, the balls going in the street, and the aesthetics of it. It does look terrible, but I think with the technology that we have nowadays, and all the different companies, and all the different products that we have, I think we could probably meet the needs of the second option, because I'm not sure that getting rid, getting rid of the volleyball courts is not an option for me, and I haven't heard of a place that we could put those where it's, it's a sound alternative, anywhere. Now, we have other alternatives for a park, for a kid park. I mean, we could, we could enhance this park right over here, People's Park, it's in need of, it's in dire need of enhancement as well. Maybe we could take the footprint off the sailing ship and move it over here, and revitalize the small area we have out there. Like you said, take out the planters, widen that area, and put, and just enhance the kiddie park over here, so we have a small area for the kids, we have the, a larger area for our middle-aged teens and our youth, which we really need to support our teenagers right now. So is it something you can maybe work with?
In the staff report, let me just remind the council that it's imperative that we get some direction, some firm direction tonight, that we don't lose this funding. We're up against a time clock here, the end of the year, or that funding goes away, and I think it would be just a big mistake to have that happen. So if I can address, I think two questions are out there. Dennis may kill me on this one, but I think there's an opportunity on the fence line, because I think that's a really important part in the whole aesthetics of what's going on there, that we do a call-out for fencing, whether it's galvanize, excuse me, whether it's a wrought iron, or it's a powder-coated, you know, fence with vinyl siding, just that we have a placeholder in there, and we come back to council with some, some looks, some renderings of what the specific fence will look like before we actually give that a thumbs up, so that's something I think we can do. In regards to putting something over the top, volleyball, if it stays as a volleyball, volleyball net is eight, you know, eight feet high, just a hair under eight feet. Typically, the play is, I like a two-foot set, if I'm playing, it's 12 feet, balls go much higher than that. You really start to bring the fence lines up quite a bit if we, you know, go that route. I don't think that's something that you want to see happen. And then in regards to Councilman Sampson and your recommendation, I mean, that's a whole different direction in moving the park, so I think that's for, you know, discussion that we need to have really quickly.
Well, I made some other points as well, which is, it's enhanced the footprint that you have out there. You don't necessarily have to have a cover, but maybe something that the kids can do during the winter as well. I mean, maybe make it utilized during the winter. Somebody said maybe you could put a miniature little soccer area in there, maybe we can introduce badminton into the community, something else that we can use the courts for, just because we've gotten some concerns that, that the space is going to waste because it's not occupied that often, which to me, as long as the youth of Avalon wants it and needs it, and they're concerned about losing it, I'm really concerned about that.
Understood, I think the challenge has been out there to get staff to do some programming there, and my advice is that if the court does stay, that we look at this in a year's period of time and reevaluate, you know, where we stand in terms of programming and the use that that court gets. I think personally, you'll see, you know, quite a bit of difference in what's happening now.
Yeah, because I'd like to see some more enhanced digital effects of what it would look like, depending on how we vote on this tonight, so that we can. Sorry, I just got a new phone, and I really don't know how to use it, so my apologies. So if you guys can come up with a couple of different options of exactly how we might make this look, and we can go into figuring out exactly what recreation departments are offering for the footprint of what we need, I think that would really be helpful for the council, and we can make a better decision on what we might want in the future. But I do believe that we can vote on maybe option one or two, and then we can go, we can throw this back in your court.
And through the process, we can go back and share some of the ideas we have on programming it once it's up.
One consideration with that, Joe, is that the project has to be completed by December 31st, or we won't get the funding. So, you know, even if we could give good direction for you tonight to move forward, I think that's what staff needs from us so that we can get moving. We only have three months now to finalize a plan and produce whatever we're going to produce. But also, I wanted to just make, on the fencing, a couple possible recommendations that, you know, maybe looking at something that's green or blue, or wave-like, that kind of goes with a pirate theme, or another idea is Downtown Disney uses a light green that is just offset from the plant color, makes it look fresh and more, you know, springish. So just, I know fencing will come back at another time regardless of if it's for both or for one, but I, my goal in our discussion tonight, and when we open it up to members of the community, in the interest of hearing everyone who does want to speak, we have received all of your letters on both sides in support, so those of you that have already sent in a letter, if we could, you know, even have you work together to get your comments to us, but I'm hoping we can find a solution that meets both sides. And so however we facilitate the conversation going forward, I believe we can come up with something that, that works for everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
No, I just had a conversation with Dan today, and he came up with a lot of great ideas, and I think he's doing a great job, and I think we just need to hear from people and make our decision on which way we want to go.
Okay, it's time to hear from the public. Comments are limited to three minutes. Let's not, let's try not to be too repetitive.
Good evening, council members. I am here to urge you to vote for the option two in Dan's presentation. For the audience, my name is Gary Mater. Sue and I own a condo, and we're here about four months a year, including all of July and August, when most of the use of Mall Park, all of Mall Park, gets used. By God's grace, I have played volleyball here for all 45 years since the court was built on this location when the mole was built around 1970. The court is used every year by many hundreds of teenagers and adults, men and women, visitors, regular vacationers, and part-time and year-round residents, family members of players, visitors who stop and watch part of the games, a good doubles game in particular, and many others also enjoy having volleyball here. There are two proposals before you, and several of you council members have discussed the second option, and I appreciate many of those comments. In my time here, I want to comment on which one is better for Avalon. One proposal, the prior plan, would triple the size of the existing play area for the tots, and add swings for the tots and young children, but it would remove the only beach volleyball court in Avalon. We used to have three, now we have one. And there is no viable location other than Mall Park for a beach volleyball court, certainly not South Beach at any time of day or night. A vote for the prior plan would be the death knell for beach volleyball in Avalon. This is the win-lose proposal, a win for one group and a total loss for another group. But there is good news, we don't need to make this a battle, I don't believe, between the ages, or between residents and vacationers, or between volleyball players and others, as Cindy just mentioned. We need a variety of recreational facilities in Avalon for everyone, and we can do it. The staff's alternative proposal would improve the young children's play area with all-new equipment and less wasted space in its existing location in Mall Park. It would also add a swing for tots and a swing for older children. tots and a swing for older children on the other side of the Veterans Memorial, and retain the beach volleyball court, with new finance, new fencing, rather, at its existing location. And it would do all this for $82,000 less money. It is the win-win proposal. Avalon is a beach community. Like every other beach community in Southern California, it needs at least one beach volleyball court. We have one, and it's in the right place. And I believe that at least most of the week in the summertime, it should be used for volleyball. Let's take advantage of this one-time opportunity to improve the play area and add swings for our young children and grandchildren, but not make a big mistake in removing the volleyball court. Some different volleyball players from those who came to our last meeting here are here tonight, and I would ask them to raise their hands this time. And that probably means my time is up. Thank you.
This is the last one. Yes, we need activities for our youth. Yes, we have very limited areas for our youth. But I sat there for 10 years, looking out that window, at the volleyball court and the basketball court. Basketball court used continuously. Always, always somebody on the basketball court. Very seldom people on the volleyball court. I sat there for 10 years, every Monday, Tuesday, for six of them, and every Tuesday, Wednesday, for the rest of it. They are underutilized. How many times I've seen volleyballs come over that fence, hit a golf cart, hit a truck, truck run over the golf, the ball. Kids almost get hit by ball, by vehicles coming down, Joe, a busy, busy street. So, as you talk about us being careful in driving, that is the worst-traveled street in Avalon. They come through, they're zipping through. So you have kids running out, trying to get a ball. It's a constant chasing balls back and forth, either on the street or in the water. Your team put together a great plan, and then now, late in the game, you have people who are trying to change that plan. And to me, that's the best plan for that area. It is a high-traffic area. It is a neglected area. There are no public restrooms on that side of town. When somebody comes and asks about a restroom, you have to send them to the pier, because there are no public restrooms. It's not looked after, it's not taken care of. And those business owners there would like a little bit more attention put to them. And by having that fence, it just blocks everything.
Thank you, Michael.
Hi, my name is Stella Lasere, and I do the senior programs for Meals on Wheels. And the taking away the volleyball court was the biggest thing that our group objected to when Dan was nice enough to come over, and he's coming back to see us tomorrow. And I hope he's coming back with good news, because we would like to have actually more activities. There is not one activity the city represents for the seniors in this town, not one. And when Dan came to talk to us and told us, when he looked it up on the internet, and found we had not any one thing for the seniors to do, it seems like that's the one thing we like to do. So please leave us the volleyball court.
Thanks, Paula.
Hi, council members. My name is Jen Dryson. I actually have two I'm speaking for. One, Debbie Wright has asked me to read what she has to say, and I'm also going to speak on behalf of myself. So I will start with myself. I have a nine-month-old and a 16-year-old, both boys. I also have a one-year-old and an eight-year-old niece and nephew. I moved back to the island a year ago. I grew up here in my teen years, left for 20 years in the military, and have just returned. I feel very confident in what this town has done for my nine-month-old son. I feel very confident that for him, up until middle school, he has all the resources that he needs, and I have all the resources for my sanity in taking him out in public here. The one thing that really worries me is middle school and high school. We have a huge drug and drinking problem in this town with our youth. I saw it myself as I moved here when I was 11, and I left the day I turned 18. One of the things that I did was I played beach volleyball, and I was there every single day, summer and winter, for three years straight, all throughout high school. For me, it was incredibly lonely, being one of the few people in this town that didn't drink and didn't do drugs. And the one place that I had, that I felt comfortable in, and that I could enjoy, was that volleyball court. If you want to see the end result of what having teen activities in this town means, I am that. I am a 20-year combat veteran. I am also a small business owner in this town. I am the ministry director of a recovery group at the community church. All of that because I had a good foundation in my teen years, and I truly believe that having that volleyball was a good foundation for me into my adult years. I have two complaints for consideration in this project. One is that that volleyball court, the reason you're not going to see people there midday, is because it is so intensely hot. 20 years ago, we were able to hook up a hose and hose it down and cool it down. But with the water rationing, we can't. So I would like to see any way that we can get a saltwater hookup, so that we can hose that court down. And yes, I agree, putting a cover is not going to work, because quite frankly, as one of those ball hitters that went out into the middle of the street, you do, it's just part of the game. You hit it too high, you're not going to be able to put a ceiling on that. The other proposal that I would like to recommend is that if we are going to get rid of the existing structure for the play, structure for the kids, I would actually like to see the volleyball court moved over, it rebuilt up to be a larger facility, so that, yes, we can bring in sand soccer or other events to it, and then extending the basketball court to be larger, because the basketball court is used all the time. That is my time for that, so I will go on to Debbie You will see, she has given you pictures, you will each see those there. City council members, yes, we don't currently have swings on the island for locals and tourists, but we do have the playground at the mole, the play equipment at Machine Gun Park, and we have the People's Park. The only thing we have for older kids are the volleyball and basketball courts. Now you want to take the volleyball court away. The members of city council were voted into office to do what is the best interest of the community, and we, as a community, owe it to our kids to provide them with healthy outlets. Then there's the tourists, the people who spend a lot of money to come over on the boat, stay in our vacation rentals and hotels, eat in our restaurants, and shop in our stores. They are the ones who sustain this beautiful place we get to call home. You now want to move the volleyball court onto one of our beaches. We have so little beach space available to locals and tourists, which is why it is always packed in the summer. Moving the volleyball to the beach would be wrong on many levels. Are you really, one, are you really going to tell people that are still on the beach late in the afternoon that they have to leave so you can set up for volleyball, talk about creating ill will with our tourists? Yes, we have beach bingo and movies on the beach, but to my knowledge, we do not make people who are on the beach leave for these activities. Two, for those who are complaining about balls going onto the street and into the water, what do you think is going to happen with no fencing keeping the balls from flying onto the walkways on Front Street? Three, let's be honest, if you move the volleyball court to the beach and it doesn't work out due to disgruntled tourists and people being hit by balls, then what do you do? You have already spent the grant money to remove the old court to put in the swings. There would be no place to put a new one in, and volleyball at the beach would be lost forever. To those that say there are always kids on the playground and rarely on the volleyball court, I have given the council photos taken this past Sunday, August 14th, at approximately 2:30, showing no one on the playground while at the same time there are kids playing volleyball. There are pictures of people playing volleyball the following day, Monday, August 15th, taken while I was walking home from the boat at 5:00, along with a picture that same night of people still on the beach at 5:00, and a picture taken today, the 16th, at 10:45, of a family playing volleyball. Then while I was sitting on the beach this afternoon at 2:30, there were again people playing volleyball. This is just a snapshot of the past three days. I do realize that there may be many times the volleyball court sits empty, just like the kids' play area, but there are just as many days that the volleyball court is being used. I ask the city council to seriously consider the overwhelming community and tourist support to keep our volleyball court in its current location. The fencing can be replaced, the swings can be installed to the left of the Veterans Memorial, and the picnic tables can be moved closer to the mole to make room for the swings, so that we can keep the number of picnic tables we currently have, or the swings can be installed at People's Park. This is a win-win scenario for our local youth community and our tourists. Thank you, Debbie Wright.
Thank you, Jill.
You heard from me last time, so I'm not going to speak too long. But I do have, if anybody council member wants it, the printout of the Facebook comments. There were also 52 likes, which were, you know, I don't have the names of those people, but there were 52 likes. If anybody didn't get the Facebook, I have the printout for you. As far as the volleyball's going out, they're going to go over the top. Maybe we can figure out something, put the fence over a little bit, so it doesn't go straight up. Maybe it'll catch some and throw it back in if you did it at an angle or something. Also, the problem part of it, some of those balls going out are because we have two open ends, and there's the gates, the doors where you walk into the volleyball court are open and it goes out. Put some gates up. A lot of volleyballs are not going to roll out into the street or out into the sidewalk. We need to have it totally enclosed with a gate. That will help a lot with the balls going out. And I agree with Cindy, I really think we could make the fence look a lot better. But truthfully, as I watch people walking into town, they're not looking at the volleyball court. They're looking at the beautiful bay, they're looking at the waves, they're looking at the ocean. Their eyes are going towards the water and the boats. I do feel that there are some prettier fencing that we could do, which would help a lot, but really, people are looking the other way. I would just encourage you to vote for option number two. Thank you.
My name is Debbie Hoffman. I'm not a resident, but my family's come to Catalina for 96 years.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Sure. My name is Debbie Hoffman. I'm not a resident. My family's visited the island for 96 years.
Oh.
And, yeah, 1920.
Great. That's awesome.
We've had generation after generation, my family, on this volleyball court. My grandfather played volleyball with your dad, my dad, we've had generations at the same time playing. One of the things that we look forward to as visitors is knowing that we get to play volleyball on the beach. I've made more friendships and connections just picking up a game, knowing the person needed an extra player. I echo your point, Councilman Sampson, that even when I was a teenager visiting here, there's just not things for teens and young adults to do on this island with a lot of positivity. I think swings can be added elsewhere, but the volleyball, it would just take part of the soul out of the island, and I know it 'd break my heart permanently. Please leave this volleyball court. Thank you.
Oh, my God.
Hi, my name is Gabby Morones, and I've been the head coach for the girls' volleyball team for five seasons, and the boys' team for three seasons. And I just want to mention real quick how important this volleyball court is. Our season starts beginning of September. This year will start before school begins. Our gym is closed, we do not have access to it during the summer. So usually, we have access maybe two weeks before. So we do a lot of our training and conditioning on that court. For the last five years, five years, we have been down there Monday through Friday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. using that court. It's different, volleyball, it's not like baseball, we don't have a Pee-wee basketball program, we don't have a Little League program. So there's obviously a need. Our school girls' team is very strong. Behind me, we have made it deeper and deeper into the playoffs for the last five years, with a semifinal run this year. That's the furthest any girls' volleyball team in the history of Avalon has gone. There's a lot of pride that we bring to our school. So if we could maybe start a youth group for middle school, high school, elementary, I think that would be phenomenal. But I have to agree, it is so hot out there. And I was driving down this weekend, and there was no one on that basketball, there was no one at both parks, there was no one on the beach volleyball court. It's too hot. There's also the feces problem that's down there. We need to have something to lock up that court, because it is just everywhere. Just a little maintenance would go a long way. I think if we took away this beach court, it would be a debilitating blow to our school programs. So I would like for you guys to keep it. Behind me, we have all CIF players, we have number-one ace server in the state of California, number 13 in the nation. We have a strong program here. So hopefully, you guys can see that they've stayed through two and a half hours of this meeting, and are eyeballing me. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, my name is Carlos Martinez. Some of my favorite memories throughout my life have been at the volleyball courts. It got me through the darkest part of my life, and was wondering, and was something I could always count on. It's the place I found myself and who I am today. I know that when it gets hard, we want to run and not speak. But I'm telling you, we all have to fight that, because we believe in it. This place made me feel like I was enough when I felt unwanted. It's my sense of belonging. It's given me the courage to embrace everything that I am today. There's fewer activities for teenagers and adults, and taking the volleyball courts isn't going to help. It's a good, safe environment. People get exercise, they get away from the computers and the technology. The volleyball court is a big part of my life. When I was in foster care, it gave me hope when I had none, because I couldn't understand my situation. It was my safe haven. It was my way to keep calm after a hard day at school. It would be a way to escape the stress of my family. When I play volleyball, I totally forget all my problems and focus on nothing but volleyball and the intensity of the game. It's like with something you love. When you hear it, play it, or see it, you forget all the things going on around you or in this world. This place means a lot to me. It saved me, and it's not too late to not let it go. It can save someone else.
Sorry, I'll be quick. My name is Jonna Howe, and I just, we didn't send any letters or emails or anything like that, but we have three generations of volleyball players that we look forward to that every, every year that we come. And I know also, as a retired middle school teacher, how important, and high school teacher, how important those courts are for the kids in the, all year round. And I just want, hope that you will keep it, because we look forward to it every year, and I think that it is a great thing. And I know it pulls our family together, and that's how we've met most of the people in this room, is through playing volleyball over the years, so that we've been here. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Selena Morones. I'm 17-years-old, my fourth year playing varsity volleyball. We've used those courts all, beginning of our season. Jumping in the sand is a little hard, makes you jump a little higher, run a little faster. We've run sprints on that sand. It definitely pushed us, got us a little more in shape. So I would just like to say I vote keeping the volleyball courts, and thank you.
Rhonda, Catalina Choices, council. I just want to, I'm thankful that I'm able to be here tonight, and I'm sorry that I missed the other times when this was up. But I know as the programs that Catalina Choices puts on, we have literally had to use those courts, because we've had 60, 70 kids, close to 70 kids, that I didn't know what to do with, because there was no gym. The place where I had them, which was at a church, was too small. And so fortunately, we had the courts, and we had a great time. It was, matter of fact, one of the greatest times, and continue to use that for that whole summer. And so the courts being gone, I know that it helps, because we do not have enough facilities here, obviously. Number two is, is that it's a lit place, okay? These kids, I've talked to kids before, and I've seen kids playing volleyball in the Metropole, I've seen them playing, I mean, everywhere you could hit a ball, I've seen kids doing that. And I asked them one night, "How come you guys don't go on the court, why don't you go over there?" You know, and, okay, well, there's not enough light to it. It's definitely low-lit. And then, the situation that was presented... And then the situation that was presented, I asked another group of kids, and they said, you know, that we're playing volleyball down by the courts, and I came over there and was actually taking pictures of them and kind of what was going on there as far as, you know, straining to see at night and all of that. But they said that the reason that, that they came there was because it was a lit place. And they were tired of being other places where people were using drugs and didn't want to be where it was. So they wanted to be in a common place that is kind of looked over by the community, that's kind of lit, for them to have interaction. And so I just, you know, I apologize for not being here at other meetings that, when this was brought up. But I really hope that we do consider, I mean, we have a lack of places for our teens, and they need to be able to have places, even if, when I go by sometimes, I see a group of 20 kids sitting in a circle talking in that volleyball place. Is that wrong, because they're not playing volleyball? I don't think so. I think it's a community place that our young people need, and I really hope that we can work this whole thing out. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Maddie. I think that I never played volleyball before my freshman year, so I think that we should do youth for youth, because if I would have played before, I think we would have been a lot better. But last year, we played for almost a month at the courts, because the gym wasn't ready to be played on. So a lot of our freshmen learned to play on the court, and that took us to a semifinal last year. And then also, I believe that the multi-use would be good, because I see kids playing wiffle ball in there also, not just volleyball. So it's already being used for other things. And if you made it easier to move the net or something, people could run easier. And so, yeah, I think we should keep the volleyball courts.
So we've heard about American Pie. Is there the other side of the story?
Can you pull the mic down, Misa, please?
I believe all of you received the letter that I sent to you that are from the business and property owners that live across the street from this. I later brought up the signed copies. I actually have more signatures on that. I have about 20 signatures. I strongly dislike having to be here. Public speaking is one of my greatest phobias. I may not be as eloquent as some of the others, but I'm speaking to you from my heart. This project was first presented, I went to City Hall, I looked at the plans. I wasn't thrilled, but I could see a lot of thought and consideration had gone into the plan to try to appease the different parties involved, including the business owners, and make it work as well as possible for all concerned with our limited amount of public land. Maybe People's Park would be a good place for a volleyball court. It's close to the school. It's close to the paramedics. This is the first area, the proposed area is the first area that our visitors see when they arrive, and I would like to think we would want to make a good first impression. They don't all walk along that area. They also arrive in the street. Through those fences, they can't see our beautiful bay. The existing chain link fences resemble a prison yard. The original, well-thought-out plan took into consideration, this into consideration, and lowered fences and created a charming, inviting children's play area while keeping the sacred volleyball, the basketball courts. Didn't mention to say that the only two people that didn't sign, that I asked to sign, said they wouldn't sign it because they wanted the basketball courts removed, because they are a nuisance. I wasn't going to touch that. The volleyball courts need to be replaced. They are not greatly used. The girls use them for a month, maybe, in the evenings. Most of the time during the winter, it's a big kitty litter box. When I ask most of the locals when they last used them, it's been, well, it's been a long time. Today, not surprisingly, they were used probably more hours than they have during the last two weeks, and this is the middle of summer. During the winter, they are almost never used, whereas the children's play area is used year-round by locals and visitors alike. It is a great place for moms and dads to meet each other and give their children a chance to play outdoors and interact with other children. As stated in my letter, the businesses located across from this area would like to see the volleyball court replaced. We see the problems which occur when the ball goes in the street in front of traffic or in the ocean, and they have to get it. We also see the ball hit visitors as they are coming and going in this very congested area. The split play area turns into a problem for the parents. And also, I think Facebook is a bully pulpit.
Is, I'm sorry, a what?
A bully pulpit.
I, I agree to that, but there were some very valuable comments on there. I hear you. I, I hear you there.
Thank you, Misa. I guess we'll take it back to the council, council discussion.
I think we need to rake more than just the beach. We need to start raking the volleyball courts as well.
I hear you.
We definitely have a problem with aesthetics, but I think Dan is going to take care of that for us, give us some good options. Got your work cut out for you, I believe. Either way, we vote on this, so. I appreciate everybody coming up and speaking your mind, especially the kids. I know it's hard for you guys to do that, but thanks for coming up. That's really cool. You'll get used to that later on in your life.
They hope not.
Maybe. Maybe.
Yeah, I just think Mr. Mater brought up some great points. It's a win-win situation, I think, with everything. We still have the kids park there. We still have the volleyball courts there. And like you were saying, Dan's going to have his work cut out for him, but I think that's a good proposal, and I'd be in favor of that second thing, myself.
I like the second proposal as well. I'd like to see another swing or two, but it's all right.
Is someone making a motion that we're seconding?
We'll make, we'll get in there. I think we're getting there.
I will go back to my original comments, and I wanted to put those out early on so that, you know, maybe we could, as members of the community, we're speaking and help to offer some solutions. I truly believe we can find a way to keep the courts and make it palatable for everyone. There is an issue with the balls going in the street. It's a safety issue. I don't know how to remedy that. I'm going to be honest. I have no idea how to remedy that, but it is an issue. That is the most impacted street, and on any given Monday or Tuesday, it is a nightmare to try to do anything that requires you to go down Pebley Beach. So I hope that, Dan, you could, here in a few moments, help us with maybe some ideas or solutions to remedy the flying balls going in the street. I think there are many options we could look at as far as fencing. Those, the information received from those that are in favor of removing the court, it's such a valid point. This is what our visitors see as they come into town. I don't think anybody wants to see a big, black, wrought iron fence as they're walking into town. Certainly not seeing what, you know, looks like the chain link fence or keeping what we have now, but finding a solution that makes the aesthetics more appealing. That, that remedies both sides. Keeping the court and making the aesthetics look better. Never at any point did I ever feel that this park was about swings. So I would want to be clear about, this was not about just adding swings to our community. This option was about the opportunity for grant funding, of which our grants administrator went out, got this funding for the city. It's grant money that we've received to better our facilities. We need to do something in this area. We need to try to help as many people and get as much participation in the community as we can. And if that means repurposing that so that we can do other recreation in that space, then reprogram the space, make more use of it, make it better. You know, look into the option of, of bringing in saltwater to cool down the sand. But, but I, I would like to see, if we were to move forward with keeping this, we have to address the safety issues of the court. So I'm still on the fence of which, which way to go with this. I don't know what the right decision is, because I, I don't really feel like we have solutions to answer your concerns, other than, than looking at some options.
Because none of the businesses were given the plans for the second option. We've never seen them. I have no idea what they look like.
They're part of the staff report.
Can you read it? If you look at it online? I cannot see it. It's just a big, black blur. It's a big, black, ugly stuff. So I have no idea what it looks like or how you access the businesses on our side of the street. So that was my concern with the first.
But I don't think that's changing. I don't think.
Very much. Well, it has to. Before, it was, it was coming between the area. There were changes. I have no idea how you access us now.
If the court stays, then it doesn't change access to the businesses at all.
Is that other walkway still there? I have no idea.
The crosswalk?
You have to ask Dan.
That walkway does remain intact, along with the two drinking fountains. I think one of the drinking fountains actually has a dedication plaque on it, so the plan was to leave those, add some additional benches in the area, but that walkway does, does stay. In regards to fencing, it was brought up, just a no-brainer is to put a couple of gates on, on the court. The basketball court can use that as well. And though, probably not the majority, and I've only played on it a couple of times, not the majority of the balls go out that way, but that will cut down some of the balls. I was involved, and city manager also chaired. But in a project that we put to extend the fencing a little bit, we use netting, like you might see around a golf course. You see it up at Joe Machado. You could go up another four feet. We ended up putting out on a multipurpose court on one end of the court to keep hockey pucks from going out. So as part of the plan to come back with some fencing ideas, you know, something like that can be taken into consideration at that time as well.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
I guess I'm up. I'm not up.
My name's Andrea Morrison. Been resident my entire life. I am on Misa's side for this. I do work right across the street from that and see on a daily basis how much the kids park is utilized more than the volleyball court. I'm not saying that it's never used. The basketball court is used exponentially more than the volleyball court. So an update to that, I am in full support of. I am also in full support of making a extended, cleaner, safer place for the kids to play. And not only that, I don't agree with the second option, because you'll have, you know, I have friends that have multiple children of different ages. They're going to be taking their kids down, and they're going to go, "Okay, well, we're going to go over to the swings." But they have the other kids that want to play. Dividing the play areas, having swings on one side and the other little tot place is not, it doesn't work. Anybody that's had young children, you know, more than one young child at a time that wants to go to the park, you know that it's hard to watch one child at one park and then have the other one. Yes, our town is safe, and you know, you want to be able to have your little kid, but for safety reasons, you don't want to have your child unattended at one park while you're playing at the swings at the other one. I just don't think that that works for many, many reasons. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Andrea.
Yes, it's my turn again. I've looked at the recreational opportunities available in Avalon for both the kids and the adults and the teenagers, and we've got the kids fairly well-covered. We got them across the street. We got them shotgun, machine gun park. We've got them down at the mall, which they're talking about redoing, which I think makes a lot of sense. For the kids, they've got the basketball courts and the volleyball courts. And for the adults, they've got the basketball courts and the volleyball courts. And I think when, we heard this in February, it's, you don't think about the summertime in February. This year, we might have, because the weather was pretty good, but you're not thinking about the uses. And I've, I see that there is a need for having a volleyball court there. I do understand that there have some issues with the gates and the kiddies and the balls. And I mean, today, when I was downtown walking around, kids were playing water polo, and I saw two kids go over the rocks to get to the water polo, as opposed to coming from the beach. Well, you know, you think about it, we've got a lot of kids going into the water polo. We've got volleyball players going in to retrieve their balls that go over the fence to the ocean side. So why don't we talk to the coastal commission, see about putting some stairs, some access stairs in, like we have out at the casino, to get the people to get to the balls. Should use this in April. So at, at the present time, I've heard the concerns. I'm leaning towards, I mean, I'm in favor of option two. I think Dan needs to address the concerns about the separation of the parks. I don't know how he addresses that. I don't know if it's addressable. I don't know if there's another location for the swings. Go to one of the other parks. You know, we got across the street.
Couple of things that can happen. One, like I said, we meet on Thursday with a consultant, and we can look at the swings. That may be a little difficult in doing. One of the nice things, and certainly I'm not pushing one of them over the other, but if you went the volleyball route, there's some money set aside, the $95,000 that hasn't been touched, and we can look at that for other opportunities, swings across the street and other projects down the road. One of the things, and I think I've spoke to a couple of council members, let's give this a year. The court's been here from, I understand, 45 years. Let's give it a year. Let's come back at the end of summer next year and see if the Recreation Department has done a job in, in programming that facility. If we hadn't, we spent a little bit of money. It's not certainly a majority of it in fencing at that point in time around the court. Some of that same fencing can be used then to put swings back in or look at, for, look at it as another play option.
Thanks. Thanks, Dan.
Thanks. I make a motion to approve the second option. And then also with the revitalization, and then to also instruct Recreation Department to look into saltwater hookups, stairs, as Holly said, and the netting, to keep the balls from going into the street. And then whatever other concerns that the council has brought, brought to bear tonight. So that's my motion.
The only other item I would like to add is the aesthetics of the fencing and to take into consideration the letter received by all the businesses across from there in, in the aesthetics. And I think you mentioned it, did I hear correctly, coming up with a solution for the balls in the street?
Well, yeah, we've, we've heard that a few times tonight, but like, like Dan said, they keep them, they keep the hockey pucks from going into the audience. Dodger Stadium, the balls don't, but when they go behind the backstop, they're caught in the net. So there's a solution to that, and it doesn't have to be something that's blocking anybody's view.
Hockey pucks at Dodger Stadium?
No, no, he mentioned.
I'm asking if that was part of your motion.
Funny guy.
Yes.
Was that in your, okay, that's what, I just want to make sure that that was part of the motion.
Absolutely.
Will someone like to second?
Oh, I thought you did.
I'll second it.
Richard, second. Further discussion, most of council?
Just, just for one comment. I worked for the fire department for 30 years over here, and I never recall responding out to the volleyball area for a volleyball wrecking a cart or hitting a kid or anything.
With that said, just tell your kids and everybody to be careful when they.
Wait, we have a vote on the table. I have one more comment, but I'd like to do it after we make the vote.
Okay. I'll call for a question then.
Four eyes and one absent, Mayor Marshall. So I did receive a comment, and I didn't want this to factor into the decision, but I did receive a comment that the U.S. will probably win the gold medal in women's beach volleyball tonight. Thank you for being here.
All you volleyball, go home and go to bed, go down to volleyball, go have a beer. Thank you all for coming.
Okay, we'll see you later.
Yeah. Not so easy.
Item nine.
Scott?
Good luck this year, you guys.
Bye, Maddie.
See you, Maddie.
Bye, Carlos.
I want to see the seniors out there.
I want to see that, too. I want to see that, too.
Hey, we used to have fairly old volleyball games with the island company.
I remember.
Till we all died.
Okay.
Okay, Scott, it's your turn.
Yeah, item number nine is consideration of the payment of $500,000 to the Southern California Edison for their work in the second D-Sol plant. The MOU between the city and Edison contemplated that the D-Sol plant operating in brine mode would contribute $120,000, 120,000 gallons a day to the production of water, and if it did so by May and was fully permitted, the city would pay $500,000. In addition, the county, if the county paid $500,000, the city's obligation would be extinguished, and the county's money wouldn't replace it. Several things have happened since that time. One, they didn't get the plant up and running in brine mode until July, but it has been running in brine mode. The city hired an engineer to look at the information produced by Edison and determine that when it is in fact running in brine mode, it's producing 127, 126 gallons, 1,000 gallons a day addition, so it met its conditions. In addition, Don Kenaby has indicated that he wants to contribute the $500,000, in addition to the city's $500,000, so that there'd be a million dollars contributed total for this. That would have a result in, if there is ever a rate case, that the rates for Avalon residents would be lower, because rather than 500,000, it's a million dollars. So, even though the strict time for the project to be completed is done, it's our recommendation that the city authorize the $500,000 for this, that it send a letter to Supervisor Kenaby, they're actually watching this meeting tonight, to see if they're going to also make the And then we would have that, so that a million dollars would be contributed. The only wrinkle in it is that we have requested a meeting, as instructed, as we informed you earlier, with Edison, because we have what we believe is a long-term solution to Avalon's water problem. Some of it is outlined in the report that I have attached to you, but we'd like to meet with Edison to get their thoughts on this, that there's something that we've missed. They have demurred on meeting with us. First, it was, they wanted to wait to make certain that the city had expended the $500,000, and then the last excuse was they wanted to meet with the consortium, not just the city. We've rejected both, and I've told them that I want a meeting directly with Edison so that we can talk about water solutions for Avalon, and I have yet to receive a response to that. So, with that, that's where we are with Edison. Again, we still are saying that we should contribute the money, get the $500,000 from the county, it's up to the council if you want to put any conditions on that.
I think it would be appropriate for you to deliver the check to Edison and Rosemeade, and have your meeting, and then give them the check at the conclusion of the meeting.
I would be happy to do that.
That's a good direction, right there.
I think we ought to hold off until we have the meeting, until they make a commitment to meet with us at your discretion, and then go ahead with our payment. Obviously, they're not really interested in what we're doing right now, in my opinion. Getting back to us, they should be getting back to us. We've reached out to them several times, and they still haven't neglected to get back to us, so shame on them. That's just my opinion. So, I think we ought to hold the money up until they meet with us.
I think we're saying the same thing, I'm saying hold the money up to the completion of the meeting.
Okay, and I understand that, and my goal is, the council directed my firm to come up with a water analysis as to what's possible solution, and look at funding opportunities for the state. So, we've identified solutions, we've identified a pot of funding, but we need to run it through Edison, because they are the water purveyor, for the time being at least. And so, we'd like to have this meeting in sufficient time for me to make my presentation to the council, the first meeting in September. So, I will push for that the next two weeks. If we can't go there, I will come here when Edison decision-makers are going to be here on the 24th of this month, do their presentation on Phase Three. They've indicated today that they're going to have some water experts there, if they have an official. I looked at my calendar, I can be here that afternoon and can meet with them on the island.
They'll be at Two Harbors tomorrow, too.
Yeah.
He's leaving someplace, going flying someplace.
I'm taking my daughter to college tomorrow.
Okay.
Good for you.
Does that equate with-
Good for her, I mean, that's for sure, that's great.
Well, I have a couple questions on the attachment.
Yes.
The attachment was by Corolo.
Yes.
And I guess first, on page one, the first bullet point, is that supposed to be 288,000 gallons per day? Is that comma just in the wrong spot?
That wouldn't be it, it says 288.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I got that right. And then, on the third bullet point, the last sentence, "Performance testing should be used to verify that this additional 120,000 gallons per day from D-Sol Plant Two is achievable." So, is this actually happening?
Yes, they've actually given us, so, at the time that they wrote this letter, what I had asked them to do was, tell me how much, because our agreement, the MOU said that the D-Sol plant in brine mode has to be producing pursuant to the specs. So, I asked the engineers, what do the specs say? And they said 120,000 gallons, 120,000 additional gallons a day. Okay, so I got the letter. At the same time, though, Edison put the plan up and running, they gave us data as to how much it was actually producing in brine mode. We provided that data to our engineers, and the engineers concluded that the plant is operating pursuant to the specifications.
Yeah.
So, they have verified that when the plant is operating in brine mode. Now, I will tell you that what Edison has also discovered is that because you have two D-Sol plants, okay, if you have enough water going in, you can, it produces more water if they're both operating independently.
Yeah.
And so, they've been doing that for a lot of the time during the summer, to produce more D-Sol water than unit number one, and then unit number two operating in a brine mode. The issue there is, are there sufficient water from the wells going into both D-Sol units-
No.
-to make them?
They're not.
And so, and again, that is in the report here that you have before you.
Because the well was paid, basically it was paid for by the island company to take the place of the well they had at Pebble Beach that got contaminated, and so they sized the well to fit unit number one, and we bring unit number two, there's no excess capacity. That's why they're brine mode.
So-
Is there anything we can do about that?
That, well, we'll talk about that in September.
Yeah.
That's-
Okay, but-
Yes, there is.
In September, that's a couple months.
No, no, no.
Right now, we're covered. They're making enough water for Avalon, between the two units. In fact, they're making more than we probably need all the time, because school's starting up again. What we need to look at is a way to reestablish the saltwater well at Pebble, or to find another place for them to dig another well, because that will add another 80,000 gallons per day to the output, which will probably get us through most every day of the year for Avalon.
So, we're going to address that, coming up.
And again, when you look at the report, if both plants are operating, I think the total capacity is 432.
In saltwater mode?
In both saltwater mode, if there's sufficient water going in, it's 400, they are designed to operate at 432 gallons per day.
Let me ask you something.
Well, that's where I'm confused, because if you go back to my original question, which was, bullet point one, when operating alone and treating water from quarry wells one and two, operating scenario two, the D-Sol plant number two produces 288,000 gallons per day more water than the existing D-Sol plant one operating alone.
It does.
So, if that's the case, then that's what we're saying is 432 gallons per day.
No, because that's quarry wells one and two, and that's the problem. That's only, we're only drawing from those wells.
So, if number, so if number one plan is producing 225,000 gallons, and if we were to just use D-Sol plant number two, which produces 288,000 more gallons, that's 513,000 gallons a day. 513,000.
Something's wrong with that.
So, that's why I'm saying, I don't, this, I mean, admittedly, this is all scientific, and it's hard to understand, but-
Okay, I think what it is saying is, operating alone, if D-Sol plant number two, the new one, is operating in saltwater mode, which it was the first month, it produces 28,000 more gallons.
28,000 or 288,000? That's the original question.
28,000 more gallons per day than D-Sol plant operating alone. In other words, D-Sol plant number two, the brand-new plant, if that's the only one operating, produces 28,000 more gallons a day than D-Sol plant number one, the old one, operating. So, number two is more efficient than number one, because it's newer technology.
So, that's the clarity, it's not 288,000, it's 28,000, so there's an extra zero on here, which is what confused me through the whole thing.
Got it.
Well, okay, so we're talking, what do we, this is all about the $500,000, correct?
Correct. And pursuant to our agreement, they were supposed to provide information to us that operating in the brine mode, which is taking the waste from unit number one, and recycling that again, you get 120,000 additional gallons per day, and scientifically, when they've provided us the data, it's doing that.
Okay, so-
One plus two equals 325.
Okay, yeah, right.
One, two by itself equals 250. Yeah, 30,000, something like that.
So, the old, the old desalinization unit is really old.
It's really old, too.
But did we make a commitment to give Edison $500,000? But they're not being very forthcoming with us right now, obviously, because they're not coming forward with you. So, I tend to, in a way, agree with Councilman Hernandez, but the thing is, we promised this to them. I think we ought to go ahead, because they've done some hard work, they've done some good work. They expedited that whole process, and they did it in like four months, and it was pretty impossible, so they did something really good for the community. But at the same time, they mismanaged and neglected our water out, our water systems to begin with, or we wouldn't be in this situation. I mean, they didn't have very good vision about what we were doing. Luckily, we pressed them really hard, and they got the job done. We need to give them the money, give them the money, and let's go back, let's go back to work with them, and let them know, we need to know what's going on for the future of Avalon. Because, I'll tell you one thing right now, oh, you might, you might say that, oh, we got enough money for the community, we're going into stage three, and every single community member and homeowner I've talked to is nervous, they're anxious, they don't know what's going on. It's not necessarily they're pissed off, I'm kind of pissed off for them, they're just concerned, they don't know what to do. I mean, I want to suggest we bring a water truck over and just set it down in the middle of town, and have people come and fill up their own water jugs. I mean, it's getting to the point to where people are, people are going to have to survive on 15 gallons of water.
33.
33?
You know, and one of the things with Edison makes, 33 for the household, 17.
For the household?
One of the things that Jeff talks about is, Edison is a balance suspenders company, they're very conservative, they're not going to bet on the come, they're going to make sure that those units do what they say those units are going to do. I am fairly convinced that sometimes this winter, they're going to relax at 40% back down to 25 for Avalon, because we make enough water. I mean, we do, and especially in the winter time. I mean, maybe we'll have a seasonal rationing plan, but-
Well, what do we do in the future? I mean, that's what I'm saying, is we got to push them, we got to give them their money, and then push them for the other projects that we need.
Again, the idea of Councilmember Hernandez is, we'll give them the money only after they've met with us on Edison and the city, and only Edison and the city, and we can share with them our ideas that we have had, our water lawyers, and the people that know where the state funds are. We have what we believe is a viable solution for a long-term water solution for Avalon.
Well, what if they say, they're just going to raise our rates, then?
One of the reasons a half million will-
The reason to have the meeting is that the state of California has told us, we like your plan, we have to run it by Edison to get them to buy in on it. There are millions and millions of dollars from the state of California out there.
There's-
And they specifically wanted to do what we wanted to do.
There's plenty of water in Northern California, okay? Then that's all fed down into the LA basin, and we're going into stage three water rationing, there's water out there. So, we're getting the raw into the deal, to use very conservative language. So, you know, I understand we made a commitment to Edison, but if they're playing hard to get right now with us, I'm going to tend to go with what Councilman Hernandez said, and you know, have the check written out, have it ready, have it in your pocketbook, and if they don't do what we need them to do, we just keep the check, and we should, we should look for other sources of fresh water to bring it in ourselves, and go to the Public Utilities Commission and say, Edison is not doing their job, and we're, we've got a half a million dollars, and we need some water in our community.
And I think Councilmember Hernandez's request is that we meet with them, if they meet with us in good faith and listen to our solution, it's a long way to get the solution done, but we're not going to give them the money until they meet with us and talk with us and share our ideas and their ideas as to what the long-term solution is. Because we made the commitment to give them the money, and Kenaby's got six more months left, and he wants to give the money, too.
And it's not, we're not giving them the money for us, we're giving them the money for the citizens of Avalon, the ratepayers. Because if they don't buy down the cost of that unit by a million dollars, they're going to put it on our shoulders, like they put everything else on our shoulders. So, we're spending money for the residents.
It sounds like we're all saying the same, well, I haven't said it yet, but we're all saying the same thing, and so I guess what all formulated into a motion, I would make a motion to authorize payment of the supplemental funding contribution in the amount of $500,000 for the completion of an additional desalinization unit for Southern California Edison's Santa Catalina Island utility, and request a similar payment from the County of Los Angeles. I would like to add the contingent point on there, that before funds are actually transferred to Edison, that they please meet with Best Besting Krieger and city manager, and we would release the funds at that time.
Thank you, Cindy. Second?
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Call for the question.
I don't like it. I'll go for it.
Four eyes and one no, I mean, one absent.
I sure hope you hammer them hard, Scott.
Yes.
Your eyes are on a different side than mine. Mine's over here.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, we have a closed session.
We have one closed session, it's to discuss the Falls Canyon update regarding the test.
You have this upside down.
Thank you, we're good. Scott?
No report left.
Thank you, we're adjourned.
Good night again, Tony.